Thank you so much. We will start the study session. Item one is an executive session, Ms. Clerk.
Yes, item one is noted as an executive session pursuing acquisition of renewable water supplies at auction from the United States Bureau of Reclamation and is being held pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and A4.
May I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. We'll be back in what, maybe about 35 minutes? Alrighty, we'll be back in 35 minutes. Thank you everyone. Thank you so much. We will start the study session. Item one is an executive session, Ms. Clerk.
Yes, item one is noted as an executive session pursuing acquisition of renewable water supplies at auction from the United States Bureau of Reclamation and is being held pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.03A3 and A4.
May I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. We'll be back in what, maybe about 35 minutes? Alrighty, we'll be back in 35 minutes. Thank you everyone.
[518.35]
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Item two.
Mayor, members of the council, I'd ask for a motion that the mayor and council authorize and direct the city manager, city attorney, and staff to proceed as discussed in executive session.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries. Item three.
Item three is a discussion of final budget and compensation plan for fiscal year 2026.
Time has been set aside for mayor and council to discuss the final budget and compensation plan for fiscal year 2026 and to provide feedback. And I just wanted to kind of start this item because we've done a lot of work on this item. And I just wanted to thank our city manager, Tim Temer, our assistant city manager, Anna Rosenberry, and all of the team that has gotten us to this point. I know that we have had lots of discussion with the community as well as labor groups, employees, employee town halls, et cetera. All this to say that there's a lot of work put into this work. And I believe that it's gotten us to a better place. I know that we've had to make some difficult decisions. We have balanced our budget despite the significant deficit by the Dusiera flat tax that we're living under and the continual onslaught of Trump's economic policies that are creating chaos and uncertainty. And we are noticing it in our sales tax collections. What I can say that we are proud of, right? We can say so much. But what I am very proud of is that we fought to maintain nearly $2 million of investment in our KidCo program. This was originally on the list to cut. And in my initial conversations with the city manager, Mr. Temer, my first reaction to that suggestion was absolutely not. I understand that this is an important service to Tucsonans and even Pima County residents. More than 2,000 children use KidCo. And it really keeps people at work knowing that their children have an after-school program that is vital for their safety. We are also adding day trucks in the fire department that will help meet the needs where they are in a safe and faster way. This is important because when dealing with medical emergencies, minutes absolutely matter. We continue to staff up and expand our 911, 311 call center. The center serves all of Tucson and our region for emergency calls through 911 and other nine crisis calls for 311. This important effort puts the right work in the right hands and provides better, faster service to Tucsonans. I'm also very proud of the investment we are making to continue funding and expanding the work of our violence prevention and intervention programs. The services of our Viva programs and the work in the thrive zones provide valuable investments to areas of our community that really need that prevention work. And of course, the budget also funds more than $20 million worth of investment in our employees. And our employees are a valuable resource. And I'm proud of the work that we've been doing. I know that we've had to cut $18 million worth of work. And, you know, we're working with the community to prioritize those cuts, but also prioritize the investment. So I just wanted to start by saying thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you to the entire team. Thank you to our labor unions that have played an important part in getting us to this point. Also, compensation, the compensation plan, there's been a lot of work by our team and our human resources director. And so I'm looking forward to the discussion and later on to the public hearing and us voting on this budget. So with that, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, and members of the council. Just as we're coming into the finish line on this, we wanted to just hit a few of the highlights of where we stand today and as you go into tonight for final budget adoption. Some of the key highlights are that we have a few budget development key goals that were presented to us. One is we were doing this in the environment of a bit of economic uncertainty, both at the federal and state level, but also how the environment, how the economy could play out over the next few years. And our historic reliance of the last few years on significant federal funding is something that we need to understand has fundamentally shifted on us. As the mayor did mention, despite the challenges, we have included significant critical needs funding in the development of this budget. That includes some investments in our police operations and equipment, implementing fire day truck operations, which will relieve significant load off of our firefighters and paramedics, that expansion of public safety personnel, but continued but expanded investment in violence prevention and thrive zone efforts. Standing up for the first time in a long time, a general capital needs investment pool that we'll be able to deploy in future years. And there's a number of IT systems that we're able to sustain as we've been bringing in technology as an expansion of the workforce. As far as the compensation plan goes, we have a number of significant investments and that top line of $23.6 million is actually almost double the investment from the prior year. And so that's a significant investment in and of itself. But it also is being deployed in a way to address some of our issues that we've had, some more longstanding than others. But one of them is in-range pay placement. We've talked about it at this table. Our employees have brought it to your offices. They've brought it to call to the audience. And they're not wrong in that we have some of our employees, especially tenured employees, that are not currently paid at the market rate they would be if they came in from the outside. So we have moved forward with the analysis and the notifications of what phase one would look like if the budget's adopted. I don't know if you're still playing that game where you drink when I say it, but it's okay. We have an annual pay progression amount that goes literally across the board. We have a series of market adjustments that would occur in October. And again, budget adoption means we will do those things. It doesn't mean we're going to come back to you in October and say, are we going to do it? It's not like last year where there was an uncertainty over the second half of the money. The market money is there. And especially a three-year commitment to both police and fire sworn personnel is embodied in that market pay. We have reinstated skill-based pay for the utility technicians at Tucson Water. And we have resumed performance review citywide. There were some areas of the city where performance reviews have been ongoing, but it's the minority. Now, we just did a snapshot of this, and I believe almost 3,000 of our 4,900 employees have had performance reviews completed as of this week. And 4,400 of the 4,900 have either been started or completed. That is an amazing accomplishment within the last probably six weeks and another few weeks to go to get as close to 100 as we can. So people have not only been, they've actually embraced the idea of having performance evaluations. And then we're on the cusp of doing what we call our 4,900 Workday Project, which would be the second phase of in-range pay placement where the data we had for round one was only some data. But over this next fall and winter, we'll have everybody updating their education experience, their full resume in Workday. We will run the calculator again and make further adjustments, even though some of those in phase one will get an additional adjustment. And then many people who aren't getting one in phase one because they might have been relying on outside experience, that'll come in for phase two. So major investments there. I do want to note, we did report to you on disputes that were filed. We had one that was timely filed but misfiled. And so there's one that's in your materials that we're actually working on as we speak. It wasn't that it wasn't of merit, it was just that we got 73 when we should have gotten 74 or whatever the numbers are. So tonight, we're really at the finish line. There will be the public hearing on the FY26 budget as tentatively adopted and the increase in the primary tax levy. The reason that just says primary is because the secondary rate actually went down. So the public hearing doesn't have to pertain to the secondary.
Time has been set aside for mayor and council to discuss the final budget and compensation plan for fiscal year 2026 and to provide feedback. And I just wanted to kind of start this item because we've done a lot of work on this item. And I just wanted to thank our city manager, Tim Tamir, our assistant city manager, Anna Rosenberg, and all of the team that has gotten us to this point. I know that we have had lots of discussion with the community as well as labor groups, employees, employee town halls, et cetera. All this to say that there's a lot of work put into this work. And I believe that it's gotten us to a better place. I know that we've had to make some difficult decisions. We have balanced our budget despite the significant deficit by the Dusiera flat tax that we're living under and the continual onslaught of Trump's economic policies that are creating chaos and uncertainty. And we are noticing it in our sales tax collections. What I can say that we are proud of, right? We can say so much. But what I am very proud of is that we fought to maintain nearly $2 million of investment in our KidCo program. This was originally on the list to cut. And in my initial conversations with the city manager, Mr. Tamir, my first reaction to that suggestion was absolutely not. I understand that this is an important service to Tucsonans and even Pima County residents. More than 2,000 children use KidCo. And it really keeps people at work knowing that their children have an after-school program that is vital for their safety. We are also adding day trucks in the fire department that will help meet the needs where they are in a safe and faster way. This is important because when dealing with medical emergencies, minutes absolutely matter. We continue to staff up and expand our 911, 311 call center. The center serves all of Tucson and our region for emergency calls through 911 and other nine crisis calls for 311. This important effort puts the right work in the right hands and provides better, faster service to Tucsonans. I'm also very proud of the investment we are making to continue funding and expanding the work of our violence prevention and intervention programs. The services of our Viva programs and the work in the thrive zones provide valuable investments to areas of our community that really need that prevention work. And of course, the budget also funds more than $20 million worth of investment in our employees. And our employees are a valuable resource. And I'm proud of the work that we've been doing. I know that we've had to cut $18 million worth of work. And, you know, we're working with the community to prioritize those cuts, but also prioritize the investment. So I just wanted to start by saying, thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you to the entire team. Thank you to our labor unions that have played an important part in getting us to this point. Also, compensation, the compensation plan, there's been a lot of work by our team and our human resources director. And so I'm looking forward to the discussion and later on to the public hearing and us voting on this budget. So with that, Mr. Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Just as we're coming into the finish line on this, we wanted to just hit a few of the highlights of where we stand today and as you go into tonight for final budget adoption. Some of the key highlights are that we have a few budget development key goals that were presented to us. One is we were doing this in the environment of a bit of economic uncertainty, both at the federal and state level, but also how the environment, how the economy could play out over the next few years. And our historic reliance over the last few years on significant federal funding is something that we need to understand has fundamentally shifted on us. As the mayor did mention, despite the challenges, we have included significant critical needs funding in the development of this budget. That includes some investments in our police operations and equipment, implementing fire day truck operations, which will relieve significant call load off of our firefighters and paramedics, that expansion of public safety personnel, but continued but expanded investment in violence prevention and thrive zone efforts, standing up for the first time in a long time, a general capital needs investment pool that we'll be able to deploy in future years. And there's a number of IT systems that we're able to sustain as we've been bringing in technology as an expansion of the workforce. As far as the compensation plan goes, we have a number of significant investments and that top line of $23.6 million is actually almost double the investment from the prior year. And so that's a significant investment in and of itself. But it also is being deployed in a way to address some of our issues that we've had, some more longstanding than others. But one of them is in-range pay placement. We've talked about it at this table. Our employees have brought it to your offices. They've brought it to call to the audience. And they're not wrong in that we have some of our employees, especially tenured employees, that are not currently paid at the market rate they would be if they came in from the outside. So we have moved forward with the analysis and the notifications of what phase one would look like if the budget's adopted. I don't know if you're still playing that game, where you drink when I say it, but it's okay. We have an annual pay progression amount that goes literally across the board. We have a series of market adjustments that would occur in October. And again, budget adoption means we will do those things. It doesn't mean we're going to come back to you in October and say, are we going to do it? It's not like last year where there was an uncertainty over the second half of the money. The market money is there. And especially a three-year commitment to both police and fire sworn personnel is embodied in that market pay. We have reinstated skill-based pay for the utility technicians at Tucson Water. And we have resumed performance review citywide. There were some areas of the city where performance reviews have been ongoing, but it's the minority. Now, we just did a snapshot of this, and I believe almost 3,000 of our 4,900 employees have had performance reviews completed as of this week. And 4,400 of the 4,900 have either been started or completed. That is an amazing accomplishment within the last probably six weeks and another few weeks to go to get as close to 100 as we can. So people have not only been, they've actually embraced the idea of having performance evaluations. And then we're on the cusp of doing what we call our 4,900 Workday Project, which would be the second phase of in-range pay placement where the data we had for round one was only some data. But over this next fall and winter, we'll have everybody updating their education experience, their full resume in Workday. We will run the calculator again and make further adjustments, even though some of those in phase one will get an additional adjustment. And then many people who aren't getting one in phase one because they might have been relying on outside experience, that'll come in for phase two. So major investments there. I do want to note, we did report to you on disputes that were filed. We had one that was timely filed but misfiled. And so there's one that's in your materials that we're actually working on as we speak. It wasn't that it wasn't of merit. It was just that we got 73 when we should have gotten 74 or whatever numbers are. So tonight, we're really at the finish line. There will be the public hearing on the FY26 budget as tentatively adopted, and the increase in the primary tax levy. The reason that just says primary is because the secondary rate actually went down. So the public hearing doesn't have to pertain to the secondary tax rate, which is changing. But the public hearing is on the budget as adopted and the primary tax levy. You would convene to a special meeting to do the final budget adoption. And then the next item would be the compensation plan adoption. And then our work is almost done, but still, the June 17 meeting, we have our financial policies. We need to bring back the reserve policy. As you recall, as part of balancing this budget, we are proposing a change to the reserve policy, but you would need to adopt that. And then we would fix the levies and assess primary and secondary property taxes in the regular meeting of June 17. With that, we are happy to take any questions or provide any other context that you're seeking.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Anything at all? Well, this means, I think I'm kind of flabbergasted that my colleagues don't have any questions or comments. Thank you. That means it's a wonderful job that you've done. I think that in the memo that you included, what I would like to include is just to note that we are making more than $16 million worth of capital investments in our departments in Tucson Police Department and Fire Department and all the other departments to keep our both police officers, firefighters, safe, equipped, and our employees, giving them, giving our employees what the capital needs that they need to do their job. The other piece that I wanted to make a note of on your memo, you look ahead, right, and what the key goals ahead for fiscal year '26, '27, rightly so, you include public and community safety, housing affordability, and unmet capital needs. I would want to make a pitch for adding unsheltered homelessness and finding solutions for our concerns with unsheltered homelessness. Because when I'm out and about, even when I'm grocery shopping, people usually come up to me and most of the time say, I like the work you're doing, fix our roads and find solutions for unsheltered homelessness. We've got to make it a central piece of our work here at the mayor and council. And I am not denying the years' worth of investments and work and programs that we've created that never existed before that have helped. But I think that the big issue that we haven't found solutions for are those unsheltered people that are serious mentally ill and/or have opioid substance use in our community. Those are the ones that we're having big issues with. And we are working with Pima County, recognizing that substance use disorders are a public health crisis. And we're putting to work together in partnership with South Tucson and Marana and Pima County, the opioid settlement funds that could be an answer to that. Much more work to be done, and I'm looking forward to regrouping as a city to see where we need to pivot, what's working, what's not working, and what we need to try. So if we can make sure that we add that to our key goals for fiscal year '26, '27 as well, so that we can talk to the community. Councilmember Cunningham?
A few things. I wasn't sure if I wanted to do this now or on the next piece. So I'm going to do part of it now, just keeping in mind that we're adopting this. We adopted the ceiling. I want to be clear that if we adapt and add revenue streams mid-year, we're not going to be violating any pieces of our budget if we do things on the fly. The second thing is that if we decide to make an additional pay adjustment in the interest of meeting the market for different employees, if the, again, if the funds are available, that we'd be able to do that, especially if we implement like January 1. I want to be able to be sure that we can be nimble enough to make room for those scenarios. And I know we are, but I just want to say it for the record because I think that's important. This is an outstanding job overall with being able to, we came in at 27 million down. We were looking at all kinds of different things. The 16.3 just for the general fund piece along with the 7.3 in marketability adjustments is a really hard thing to do when you're facing a deficit. And that's incredible that we're able to meet all those pieces. But we still can't be in a situation where we're running into problems with service delivery for next year. So if we're able to identify new funding streams between now and December 1, and they pop up, I think there's opportunity. The other thing we talked about today was jail board. And with what the mayor just talked about, I know you guys have been conservative about banking jail board, those jail board savings in, but maybe that's our opportunity to use for community court and stand up some of those immediate measures we want to take with some of our folks that are unsheltered homeless. So that's just kind of, I wasn't going to say anything until you brought up the homeless stuff. And I was like, well, this is that jail board savings is that best opportunity for community court. So and I know this is going to seem like hell is freezing over, but thank you, Pima County, for actually doing a good job on the jail board piece and not jamming us up because that's kind of against the grain a little bit. So I want to give a shout out to them right there.
Any others? I just had a question about the compensation plan because as mayor, I have to serve in a public hearing for employees to talk about their compensation. And we had about 94 or more concerns about our compensation plan. Mr. Manager, have those been resolved? And I know that there were some concerns about commissioned police officers and firefighters and a big piece on command staff. So do we have a plan for that?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Yes, the vast majority of those have either, have been, an opinion rendered one way or the other, and whether they're disputable, not disputable. And those that are disputable, what our next steps would be, we still have some work to do in that space to finish it off, including that additional one that came into us after the fact. But the person was timely. We just didn't receive it timely. So there's additional work to be done there. But even the ones, if they were not found to be disputable, it's useful information for us to consider and react to. Specifically to police and fire command staff, we are doing a study, a market study as we speak. And that is something that if we identify gaps in market there, my expectation is I would bring something back to you in August or September to try to address that at the same time we're doing market in October. So the conversation on compensation is never completely done. I think we've got a great groundwork, but as Councilmember Cunningham said, and as you've just asked, there's additional refinements or clarifications or even potential investments that could play out during the fiscal year as we move closer to that market date. And the real constraint we have is not going over the total dollars, but our ability to reallocate resources still remains with us.
Councilwoman Bullock?
Thank you. It does occur to me that, you know, we're addressing our employees. We have some employees that are through other managed entities, for example, our transportation, transit. I don't know, there might be other groups that I'm not thinking of. But can you just explain how the budget ensures that any positions funded through city resources have been handled in a fair manner so that we're not leaving out groups of employees as we look to address fair compensation?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bullock, first of all, whether a direct city employee is represented by union or not, we treat them as equally as we can. So all of the pay structures we talked about are applying to our workforce across the board, regardless of whether they're represented or not. In addition, the main sources of people we employ indirectly are, first of all, through our transit function. We have a Teamsters Union of the drivers and the mechanics. They negotiate with actually the operator of the system. But we do budget dollars to accommodate the salary negotiations that occur there. And the guidance that I've given to our operator is treat them as close to the same way we treat our city employees as you can. And so then they're in the middle of that negotiation right now, so I can't really say too much more about that. But the overall guiding principle is treat them as if they were city employees.
And the dollars allocated reflect that?
That is correct. There are dollars allocated to cover that. And then I'll also mention, this mayor and council goes a step further in contract, employees of the contractors who do business with the city of Tucson are treated fair from a wage perspective and sun protection and heat protection. All the things that you compel the city to do through your leadership with our employees, we do our very best to pass that on to the contracts that we award. Even though those aren't our employees, we really seek for them to have a good, safe work environment. Welcome.
All right, if there's no other questions, comments, Mr. Tamir?
Madam Mayor, there are two items I just want to point out for tonight, and no action required right now. One is we would ask again for a special motion related to the funding for the Metropolitan Education Commission, just so that we can avoid, and it's the same amount we've been giving routinely recently, but we just want to make sure we don't have a conflict of interest potential there. And the other is, we're going to need to read into the record one element of the compensation plan. Our magistrates are always an interesting thing in that the way their salaries are set follows a bunch of guidelines. But our intent is, if we're giving a one and a half percent across-the-board raise, we want to make sure that they have access to that when the time's appropriate. And that timing is normally when a new, any of the magistrate gets reappointed, they all kind of benefit. But we want to read that into the record tonight to make that abundantly clear that for next year, they would benefit from the annual pay progression when we have a triggering event before council to be able to allocate those dollars. So we wanted to just read that into the record tonight so that we, there's clarity on the magistrates. Thank you, Mayor. That's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Tamir. We're going to move on to item four. Item four.
Discussion regarding union release time?
Councilmembers Cunningham and Bullock and I have requested this item because it is important for us to fully understand the effects of the recent court ruling regarding union release. I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Bullock and Councilmember Cunningham, for bringing this item forward and being able to attach my name to it. I want to be clear about something that should never be in question. This mayor and council have been and will continue to be pro-union and pro-worker. I've always been pro-union. I understand firsthand what being part of a union means to working families. My father was very involved with the United Farm Worker Union. And as a result, our family and our neighbors really benefit from the benefits of what unions are and what they do for workers. First as a council member and now as mayor, we've worked together with labor unions to deliver historic progress here in the city of Tucson. We passed a Sasa Chávez and Dolores Huerta holiday. We raised the minimum wage for city workers to $15 an hour and implemented compression adjustments across the board. This was before the minimum wage passed in the city of Tucson. We invested in our workforce through the largest market-based compensation package in city history, $33 million, guided by the first comprehensive pay study that had happened in years. We listened to our union partners and directed staff to conduct additional market reviews and issued payback when it was warranted. We moved away from an across-the-board percentage base across that gave the largest increase to the highest-paid employees towards giving every employee the same amount of money, meaning that those paid the lowest saw the greatest percentage adjustment with respect to their previous salary. We passed a prevailing wage ordinance to prevent cash pay at work sites. We established the first-ever labor liaison at the mayor's office and later lobbied for and hired within the human resources department, a labor liaison to ensure that labor's voice was at the table. We championed to significantly strengthen our commitment to fair wages by expanding the living wage ordinance, ensuring that more workers, both inside and outside city government, are paid fairly for their labor. We passed a heat ordinance for outdoor workers within the construction trades and established a heat advisory committee with union representation. No other mayor and council have presided over such significant pay packages as this mayor and council. Now, with the Arizona Supreme Court's ruling in Gilmore versus Gallego regarding union leave time, the city of Tucson is facing a new legal reality. The city of Tucson manager and city attorney, in my opinion, were too fast to comply with the Arizona Supreme Court decision. They acted quickly rather than taking the time to truly understand the ramifications of how this would impact union representation for city employees. And in my opinion, they should not have taken us down this path. This recent ruling from the Arizona Supreme Court may restrict one specific tool, but it does not erase the commitment of mayor and council to union representation for city of Tucson employees. We will continue to look for lawful, creative, and collaborative ways to continue this essential partnership. And the reason I list all of the work that this mayor and council have worked on is not to tutor our own homes. It is to really highlight, not just to the public and workers in the city of Tucson, but also to remind our city manager, our city attorney, our HR director, that this mayor and council is and will always be, as long as I'm mayor, pro-union, and that we need to bring our unions to the table to help us make decisions. And this particular issue was one that I believe the administration acted too quickly on. And unfortunately, the city of Tucson led on an issue that we should not have led on. Many times, I like to tout that the city of Tucson leads on pro-union and sustainability issues and so many other things that are important. I don't think we should have led on this issue. So with that, I'd like to invite our city attorney and city manager to present. I know, Mr. Attorney, you have a presentation. And then we'll take it to our coworkers.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I do have, it's a short presentation, at least in terms of slides, just about a half dozen slides. But I'll supplement the content of the slides as we go through. And I have a feeling there might be some questions. So I want to make sure we left some room for questions. A quick introductory note that the Gilmore case relating to union release time, the Supreme Court decision, the city wasn't a part of it. It was something that the city advocated for. But as the decision was issued by the Arizona Supreme Court, we're required to comply with it. It applies to all public employers across the state of Arizona. In connection with this item, provided quite a bit of information in the agenda materials, including correspondence between my office and the attorney for the public safety unions. And I just want to take a second to thank him, Mike Oriol. We agreed early on that we would exchange public memos so that we could share them with others, so I could use them to talk with my peers across the state, and so that we could have this type of public discussion. So I thank him for that. So let's be sure we know what we're talking about. What is release time? What is union release time? And in the context of the Gilmore decision, it's about employer-paid release time. And it refers to time when a city or town employee is released, hence the name, from his or her normal job duties and permitted to perform work on behalf of the labor organization, the union instead. As I mentioned, release time can be paid or unpaid. The issue in Gilmore and the issue with provisions in our MOUs with our labor unions is employer-paid release time. We have four separate labor MOU's.
We have four separate labor MOUs, one with each of our labor organizations. Each of them had different provisions about release time, but fundamentally, they, in terms of the type of union activity that was authorized to occur on paid release time, are all very comparable and very comparable to what was at issue in the Gilmore case. And examples of the activities that have been authorized through these agreements include time spent representing employees in grievance or disciplinary proceedings, participating in labor management meetings and discussions, educating employees on work rules, attending trainings and conferences to become more effective representatives, and other union-related So I am not going to try and turn this into a legal dissertation or presentation to a state bar convention or something like that, but it is useful to have a little bit of understanding of the progression of release time cases in the Arizona courts. Because the Gilmore case was not the first time that the Arizona Supreme Court examined constitutional and legal issues that are associated with union release time. The first case goes back to 1984. It's the Wistber case, and it's a sort of seminal gift clause case in the state of Arizona where the Supreme Court established the test for the gift clause. How do you satisfy the gift clause if you're a public employer? And in that case, the court was looking at release time for a single employee who was the president of the teachers' union, and the issue was that the employer was paying for a portion of her salary while she was performing some union-related duties. And in that instance in 1984, the court, under the facts of the case, said it survived the gift clause analysis because the expenditure was modest and there was significant and substantial duties that the employee was required to perform on behalf of the district as opposed to on behalf of the union. Then you had in 2016, the Cheatham case, and I have a separate slide on this because this is one that gets a lot of discussion, and it involves far more substantial release time provisions in the plea, the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association MOU in Phoenix. Again, that case, the Supreme Court, Arizona Supreme Court upheld the provisions of that agreement in the face of a gift clause challenge because they made the determination that the expenditures served a public purpose, that's the first part of the gift clause test, and they were supported by adequate consideration. But there was a key difference in the Cheatham case, and in that case, it involved release time that was funded in lieu of other compensation that would have been paid to the labor, the represented labor group. So in other words, the court had made the determination that, based on the evidence in the case, the city had agreed if they were going to pay this money to the employees anyway, but they set aside a certain amount that would fund release time. So in other words, the court determined that the payment was actually being made by the employees rather than the employer, okay? Because for release time specifically, it was being paid for by compensation that was foregone by the employees and instead given to the union for the purposes of release time. The other thing about the Cheatham case is that it was the beginning of the end in many ways for employer-paid release time because there was very strong dissent written by Justice Timmer, who at the time was just an associate justice, who is now the chief, the presiding judge of the Arizona Supreme Court. And her opinion and dissent, joined by another justice, was that it in fact violated the gift clause and in that there was no public purpose, legitimate public purpose, served by releasing public employees from the duties that they were hired to perform and instead paying them to work on behalf of a private association, the unions. And that's important because that's the evolution to the Gilmore case, and that ultimately became the unanimous position of the court in the Gilmore case, in which the court, as you know, said that the release time provisions that it was reviewing violated Arizona's gift clause and said that in fact they clearly flunked the consideration prong of that test. So as I mentioned, I'll talk a little bit more about Cheatham because I know that you hear about it, say, hey, that's in Gilmore, the Arizona Supreme Court didn't expressly overturn Cheatham. So if release time was upheld in that case, why can't we continue to do it after Gilmore? As I mentioned in my earlier comments, in Cheatham, there were taxpayers who sued alleging the release time violated the gift clause. The trial court actually agreed and said, yep, it's in violation of the Constitution. It's thrown out. The Court of Appeals agreed, but the Supreme Court reversed, as I mentioned, and except with dissenting, two of the judges dissented. But the key component of the case as to why it's different from Gilmore and the situation we are now is that the court determined that it was really paid by the employee group as foregone wages. So that brings us to Gilmore. Little factual background with respect to Gilmore. The lawsuit was brought by employees of the city of Phoenix who were eligible to be members of AFSMI but chose not to be, and they were represented by the Goldwater Institute. And they brought two fundamental legal challenges to the release time provisions that are in the AFSMI MOU in Phoenix. The first, they said, based on a 2018 United States Supreme Court case, which is the Janus case, and I'll talk about that for just a minute, that the release time provisions in the AFSMI MOU violated the First Amendment as compelled speech. So let me talk about that for a minute because it's going to be important with respect to the gift clause. In Janus, the United States Supreme Court held that compelling union-eligible employees to support union activities through dues or other diverted wages violates the First Amendment because it's unlawful compelled speech, okay? And so the plaintiffs in Gilmore said, to the extent that these release time provisions are being supported by diverted wages that otherwise would have gone to me as a represented employee, they are compelled speech and they violate Janus. And so, and Arizona's right-to-work laws, and I won't go into that. The court in Gilmore said, no, we don't agree that this particular case and the facts of this case in Gilmore and the AFSMI agreement violated Janus because we're determining that in this case, the monies that were being used to fund the release time were not foregone wages. They were, it was separately negotiated as just release time that the employer is paying and not the individual employees through foregone wages. So the good news for the defendants in that case was that the court did not invalidate it on the grounds of First Amendment compelled speech under Janus. However, that meant that it was a city expenditure of the employer funds, public funds, so it was subject to gift clause analysis. And ultimately, as I've already mentioned, the court determined in an unanimous opinion that in, under the circumstances and given what the release time activity was, that it didn't come close to satisfying the gift clause analysis. Fundamentally, the court said that there, it doesn't satisfy the public purpose requirement, although the court ultimately invalidated it on the second prong of the gift clause test, which was the adequacy of consideration. And one thing here to talk about is how the Arizona Supreme Court's jurisprudence on gift clause itself, take release time out of your head, but just generally gift clause. We've had to deal with it in the context of economic development, and those of you who've been around for a long time know that the, what we can do under the gift clause in terms of public expenditures as incentives, et cetera, has changed over the year based on Supreme Court decisions. And ultimately, the Supreme Court has reviewed gift clause consideration to the public entity that it can't be an indirect benefit or something that you really can't quantify in terms of direct consideration in return for the expenditure that the public entity is making. And so that has factored in now into the release time analysis because in the prior decisions on release time, the Supreme Court said the public employer gets benefit by improved relations between management and labor, by more harmonious work environment, more productive operations environment. But that's not the kind of benefit that the Supreme Court looks at anymore in terms of what counts as consideration. You got to be able to point to dollars that you get back in return or benefits that you can quantify. And so in that sense, Gilmore seems like a somewhat natural result of the evolution of the gift clause cases that we've seen some from our Arizona Supreme Court in the last dozen years or so. An important part of Gilmore, because they did not, the Supreme Court did not expressly overturn Cheatham. And people say, well, why not? It seems like for all practical purposes you did. Well, they inserted into a footnote that they're not going to overrule Cheatham because none of the parties asked for it, and it wasn't briefed as part of the case. What I would say is that the only thing, and so instead, they distinguished Cheatham on the issue that I described, that in Gilmore, it really was expenditure of employer funds to pay for release time, whereas in Cheatham, it was expenditure of employee foregone compensation to pay for release time. And so some people have turned and said, well, if that's the case and that part of Cheatham is still viable law, why don't we just do that? Well, the court made sure that it covered that as well by saying, if you try and cure this gift clause problem by making the release time paid by the foregone compensation that would have gone to the represented employees, now you're in violation of Janus because now you're diverting their compensation and it's compelled speech, okay?
And the Arizona Supreme Court wrote that?
Yes, they didn't say it is a violation, but they said it's the likely result, and their analysis really leaves no room for another conclusion. And if you look at the attorney, even the Arizona Attorney General's office, well, I'll get to it here in a slide. So I'm sure you've heard about this as well. In November of 2024, so about three and a half months after the decision, the Attorney General issued a letter. It's not an opinion, and in fact, it starts out by noting it's not an opinion and she's not in a position legally to give an opinion on the case, but was offering some observations about the impact of the decision. And she encouraged cities and towns to continue to work productively with their unions, to try to come up with some alternative model that could work, although she says in the letter very clearly, not sure what that would be. She also, as part of that letter, and I included in your materials, notes that the Supreme Court made that, was careful to point out that if you switch your model to have it be paid for by foregone employee compensation, then you're going to run into the Janus and Arizona right-to-work problem, okay? So I want to note just something about what do we do in the immediate aftermath after the decision came out. It came out July 31 of 2024. I've been doing this long enough to know that union issues are extraordinarily important to the mayor and council. I got an email out to the mayor and council either that night or the next morning saying, here's this decision that just came out. Based on our initial read of it, it probably ends employer-paid union release time throughout the state, but we're going to take a little time and I'm going to confer with my peers across the state to, you know, see if we're missing something. That week, I got together with the Arizona City Attorneys Association. We put together a working group of attorneys from across the state who have to address this issue. It doesn't affect every jurisdiction because smaller jurisdictions don't necessarily have these arrangements, but it affected most of the large cities. We started meeting every week or two, and we've continued those meetings, not as frequently, but until this very day, to say, hey, are we missing something? What are you guys going to do, et cetera? So we have talked about this literally from the, within the week of the case coming out because we're all facing the same thing. I also engaged in the exchange with the legal counsel for the public safety unions again, and we did that with public analysis so we could share those. And ultimately, we came to our determination that there was no lawful way to pay the release time. I'll talk about an exception with respect to donated leave because that is a viable model under the gift clause, under the Supreme Court's opinion. Of course, the labor association's attorney is of a different opinion, and so, you know, back in August and September, when we were exchanging that correspondence, invited a legal challenge and said, you know, if you want to bring an action, we can go over to Superior Court and see if the court agrees with your position or not. And we haven't landed there yet, but I just wanted you all to know that that's something that's been on the table. Ultimately, based on my advice to the city manager, I felt that we could not continue to pay expenditures that the Arizona Supreme Court said violated the Arizona Constitution. I have not talked to a single municipal lawyer throughout the state who disagrees with that opinion, but not everybody acted with the same speed. I can tell you that we are not alone in having suspended the payment of release time as we work through revised or new MOUs through meet and confer process with the different unions. Unpaid release time is not a problem, so union employees can still be released from their normal job duties to go perform those functions, whether it's representing other union members in disciplinary proceedings or participating in the meet and confer process or any of the other things on the list. If it's not paid by the employer, there's no gift clause issue, right? We have, I've had very extensive conversations with my peers across the state. In fact, we just had our summer conference last month, and we had a session on release time. And what's, does anyone think there's anything we can find, some tasks, some union-related activities that can still be defended under the Gilmore case? About the only things that we've identified with any level of confidence, based on the specific findings of the Arizona Supreme Court, have been things like serving on departmental task force and boards at the direction of the department. So an example here would be the participation by the members on the local pension boards. You know, and they can do that on city time. You don't even have to call it release time, it's just part of their duties, but they would be paid by the city. And we're continuing to try to figure out if there are other examples, but they're looking at the language of the case. The court really boiled it down to that release time, by its very definition, you are releasing an employee from the duties and the job responsibilities that you hired them and that you pay them for. So when you release them from performance of those duties, that is exactly the type of issue that the gift clause is designed to prevent. So in the months that followed our suspension of the payment of release time as the employer, Mesa has done the same, Tempe has done the same, Maricopa has done the same. There are others in some small jurisdictions. The city of Phoenix has allowed their existing MOUs to play out. They are expiring this month, and I can't speak for the city of Phoenix as to what they will do July going forward. I am expecting that they will not be paying for union release time, at least in the manner that they have been. But they have talked about securing an independent legal analysis and financial analysis to try to identify a quantifiable consideration that could be attached to certain different union-related activities to try and be in a better position to say, okay, look, now we can say this brings this much value back to the city as the employer as opposed to the value that it provides to the union. One thing I did want to mention on the viable is, yeah, it's my doc. The, I mentioned that there is a viable model, even in The, I mentioned that there is a viable model even in the aftermath of the court's Gilmore decision, which is release time hours that are donated by other employees. So, in that case, it is not a compelled speech issue, because it's a voluntary donation by employees. You don't, it's not mandated to all the union-eligible employees. They donate hours into a leave bank, and then the authorized union representatives can use that leave bank to be paid their normal work hours while they are engaged in the authorized union activities. And in fact, our TPOA agreement already has that as part of its model. The TPOA agreements really has two different components. It had two full-time release time employees. In other words, two employees who were paid their city salary, but were authorized to be on release, 100, full-time, right, to do the union work. The other portion of it, and that's the portion that is invalidated by the court. There's a second portion, which is a bank of up to 3,000 hours of donated leave from other employees. It goes into a bank, and then they can use those hours for their release time. That doesn't violate the gift clause, because it's coming from the employees who have chosen to donate into that bank, as opposed to directly from the employer.
All righty. Before I go on to questions, I love the picture of Sophia, by the way, your daughter, your talented daughter. Really appreciate the promotion of her work. I've had a conversation with Mayor Kay Gallego about what the city of Phoenix is doing in terms of the financial analysis of how, of trying to find something that does not constitute a gift clause. And so, I've asked her if the city of Tucson can join them, even going, you know, half seas in terms of paying this financial, for this financial analysis. And Mayor Gallego has said she would be more than happy to, you know, to have us, the city of Tucson, join them. So, I just wanted to put that out there, so that we have that option. With that, I just wanted to make sure that I clarified and put that on the table. With that, Councilmember Cunningham?
A few things. I remember putting a memo for this in February. It's good that we're hearing it now. I wish we would have had this conversation in February when I submitted the memo. We should have slow-played this. We had a bunch of different opportunities to let this play out. We had existing agreements in place. None of the cities that didn't slow-play this got penalized. This should not have been a first priority for us. It is a moving target what release time is. Right now, we have situations where we have people going to hearings to perform their union duties for people who are appealing, and they are told they can't have it during work hours, and then they're told they can't meet with them during off-hours because of this case law. They are getting contradictory emails that we have documentation of, telling them whether or not they should be meeting or not meeting. It is completely confusing. The bottom line is, is if you are a union rep, and you're representing someone in a disciplinary hearing, you are performing a public value duty. It is a moving target. If you are meeting with a council member to talk about union relations, that is of public value. It should be counted as your time. Those are things that other cities have put in, and we have not. There are different alternatives that should happen, but I have a few questions first. I saw, I have a couple of questions first referencing Chris May's letter. PowerPoint slide number three. You summarize the progression of release time cases, and you mention West Duber in 1984, but you don't mention that it was upheld. Does it make sense for us to look at that case to see what portion of it was upheld, and some union release time arrangements that are based on that case as a way to go forward with the city of Tucson?
West Duber was analyzed by the court in Gilmore, and distinguished the case just like it had for cheater. So, there's, it doesn't present any new opportunity to say, oh, we missed something because, you know, we could, West Duber is somehow authority for us to continue to pay the release time as we had.
How can we ensure that our COT release time serves a public purpose? So, in other words, is there a way we can classify different types of release time, where this release time is unpaid, and this release time is paid as part of the CBA, or whatever negotiation we do in the next round? That's kind of what the alternative I'm looking for, is I want to build some of that stuff in that actually serves a public purpose. Because what you've said was, we can't pay them for stuff they're not paid to do. But if we designate in their contract that the elected, part of the elected rep's job is to represent, represent as a union rep and stored in different hearing, and meet with council members to improve labor relations, and we put that in the job description of the duly-elected person by the union, how is that violating the case?
Because to serve a public purpose, the employee has to be performing duties that are the direction and control of the employer, and not the direction and control of.
We are the employer, and we are telling them that this is part of their job. How are we not doing that?
Because they're performing that duty in their role as the union representative.
But we were the ones, we are saying that in, in the bargaining agreement, we're saying that in the bargaining agreement, you guys can elect a representative, and this is part of their job. So, if we're saying that that's part of their job, how are we violating that? I just, I'm trying to figure this out.
Right. And the Supreme Court did directly address that issue in its analysis, and stated that that's what the union is there to do. The city isn't getting any additional consideration by that work. That is what the union is already obligated to do in terms of representing.
But we have a process for all of our discipline. We have a process, and we have a meet and confer process for all of how we set our wages, and that's all public benefit. It's how we maintain a workforce that's got our back. I mean, that serves the city properly. That's part of the whole gig. So, I'm just trying to figure out how that isn't within public's, public purpose. And if we have to, then we'll go to the federal court and see what happens. But in the meantime, I'm not afraid to at least test the creativity waters on how we can implement this. And I just want to make sure you guys know that, because it doesn't make any sense to me right now that if we designate what these are in a generic way as part of the collective bargaining agreement, then we can't have this. I know there's got to be other creative ways. So, I have a motion.
Let me answer those questions first. First of all, there is no path to the federal courts. This is a state-issue, state constitution. Secondly, all of those structures were in place in the AFSMI agreement. That was the subject of the Gilmore decision. That's exactly the activities that the court analyzed. The union work representing employees, engaging in meet and confer, engaging in labor management meetings, engaging in training of other employees of employee work rules. It's not like those were not the factors in the case. These, the duties and lawful union activities that were the subject of the Gilmore decision are indistinguishable from those that are at issue with the MOUs across the state.
So, in other words, the court gets to decide what our city designates as public benefit?
The court gets to decide what constitutes public benefit for the purposes of the Arizona Constitution's gift clause. And let me, let me say this much. As I tried to say at the beginning, this was not an issue that we brought forward to say, we don't think we get public benefit from the work that the union does on release time, whether it's paid or not. In fact, we have advocated for it. My personal opinion is I think the court is wrong in how it's analyzing the gift clause, not even just in the context of Gilmore, but in the context of some of the economic development cases. In fact, the attorney in my office, who wrote the opinion memorandum in the material that I shared with you, Regina Nasson, she was actively involved in the litigation of the cheater case, advocating for release time satisfying the gift clause. She filed multiple pleadings in that case. She understands it better than anyone in the state, certainly better than I. We're not saying it doesn't satisfy a legitimate city purpose. What the court's saying is, for gift clause purposes, it does not. And they're the ones who wear the robes. I'm not.
Two other suggestions. One is, what's the, what's the penalty for the gift clause violation? In other words, I'm thinking about Michael Jordan paying the fines when he violated the colors for his shoes.
Well, the first thing is.
Fine, we'll pay the fine.
The first thing is, you can't knowingly make an unconstitutional expenditure. The second thing is, the penalties are that the monies have to be returned, and you pay Goldwater all of their attorney's fees, which will be a lot.
All right. The second one is, what if we build into it a bank, and we give every employee an extra two hours a year, and then they just in turn donate it as part of their CBA, and then we have our bank?
What you can do is structure like we have in the TPOA agreement in the past. There can be a donated leave bank. What I would suggest is being careful about saying, we're going to give additional compensation to feed it, because now you're just.
And it has to be voluntary as well, right?
It's got to be voluntary.
Still got to be voluntary, but.
Councilmember, do you have a motion?
Yeah. I move that we direct the city attorney to continue to engage with his peers in Phoenix and other Arizona cities to identify union-related activities that could qualify for paid release time to facilitate viable alternative models such as employee-donated leave.
There's a motion, there's a motion in a second. I'm going to go to Councilmember Ulrich, and then Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
I appreciate, and I think that joining with our labor unions, we probably could come up with some very legitimate and viable strategies to address our need to have employee unions engaging with our labor liaison. We created a position for a reason. So, I don't think anybody disagrees, including you, Mike and Tim. I know that you understand what we're trying to accomplish, I think, and I appreciate your acknowledgement that, you know, it makes sense to slow-walk it and really see if we're exhausting all opportunities and options. I'm not going to suggest my creative ideas at the table here. I just want to assure everybody, including employees who aren't right now members of any union, we want to be fair for sure. I personally believe that every employee does benefit from the fact that we have labor unions, whether or not folks opt in to join. I think it benefits the public tremendously. And so, I just think that this is going to be a good process, and I appreciate, and quite frankly, Mike, I really respect you and your intelligence and your ability to help us find legitimate paths to, to make sure that we're keeping folks at the tables where we need them to be, all of our union representatives. And like I said, given the legal lens on this right now, I'm just not going to throw out ideas, but I think that we have a better shot figuring something out, because you're in the chair you're in, so.
Especially with the city of Phoenix that's doing a, they're paying for a financial analysis.
And do you need that in the form of a motion in terms of partnering?
That's part of the motion.
Okay, good, good, good.
Vice Mayor, and then Councilwoman Lee.
Yeah, I guess for the record, thank you, Mayor. I, you know, also reiterate what the mayor and Councilmember Cunningham said about, I know it was like a directive, right? City attorney talked to city manager, and this was put into place, and then we were just informed about it from our labor groups, that it puts us in a very bad position when we talk about this mayor and council being pro-labor, and this happens without us knowing or giving input, and that this was a lawsuit against the city of Phoenix, who has dragged their feet and are trying to think creatively of how they navigate this court decision. So, I'm a little frustrated about that, and also like agree with Karen. I know that our staff is highly intelligent and looking out for mayor and council, but that this also has political repercussions for us. So, I think it's important to bring that to the table. My understanding is also that AFSMI and the city of Phoenix, that part of the issue was that they had agreed to a specific dollar amount, around a half a million dollars, that was never stipulated of how to track the hours for grievances, negotiations, et cetera. So, there was no way for them to demonstrate that they would data to back up the money and the benefit to the public employer. And so, that's my, my understanding of how that, that decision came to be. And as we're talking about the, the public benefit, we, we know, as has been said, union representation has a critical, conservative, a critical ombudsman role, resolving disputes early and reducing complaints, investigations, and legal escalation. And for example, I have a relative that's a president of her union and served half-time union release ombudsman position with the Chandler Unified School District. She had a cubicle at the school district office and a job description working out of HR, doing advocacy and support, listening and mediation, as well as serving as union president on school district committees. When that position was eliminated, and that wasn't related to this decision, HR had to hire two investigators to handle the increased number of claims. And in this case, similar to the West Duber decision, the school district more than met the adequacy of consideration prong of the gift clause, and inspired by school districts around the state that have been making this work for years, can the city of Tucson, in conjunction with our four labor organizations, craft an agreement that keeps us legal and also safeguards productive employer-employee relations and compliance with the Arizona Constitution? And as I was hearing Mike Rankin speak, it's, it's really emphasizing on release time. And what if we don't call it release time? And when we do have labor leadership in, in these positions, that they have these additional HR-related responsibilities, and maybe they become more of the labor liaisons than what we currently have? So, for me, it's more like with, with any kind of legal, anything, there's always creative ways to get around it, or to protect ourselves. And so, I'm hoping that we can think innovatively in how we do that, rather than just saying, oh, too bad, we can't do anything.
And Vice Mayor, that's what you're, the point you just made is exactly why, in response to an earlier question, I was talking about, you know, union activities that, you know, we're trying to think of that could still occur, but they don't have to be in release time. They're just part of their duties as, under the control and supervision of the employer, which is the point you're making.
I have a question. Is there a possibility, as the city of Tucson joins the city of Phoenix, they have not instituted this ruling, as I understand it? Would it be possible for the city of Tucson to pause our not-paying release time until we figure out with the city of Tucson what financial, you know, the financial work that they're doing in researching, or with any ideas that, that we might have? So, is there a possibility of pausing what we are doing now?
So, Mayor, two things about that. First of all, I need to say that the city of Phoenix is in a unique position as compared to any other city in Arizona by virtue of their charter and code provisions for the structure of their labor agreements. They've established their own labor relations board. It's far closer to a collective bargaining model than any other city in the state. So, they have some separate legal concerns about taking action before an existing labor agreement expires. I can't say anymore about that, but that's, I just want you to know that each city's in a little bit different position, and that's true of Phoenix as well as Tucson. I can't make the recommendation that we resume expenditures that I don't see any way to justify as not being a violation of the Constitution.
Based on the Arizona Supreme Court.
But that said, and, and, you know, you said that you've reached out to the mayor, I've reached out to the city attorney there, to say if a financial analysis can identify certain activities that we could then feel comfortable paying for, I won't say granting release time for, but paying for as part of their duties, then, I mean, during the conference, I was one of the three presenters, and I ended it by just saying to the room, if anybody thinks of any, you know, new creative defensible. new creative defensible approach, because these activities that have been performed historically by the unions for all of our different cities have great value to us. But they don't have the value in the context that the Supreme Court looks at and the context of the gift clause. So if any of you can quantify these or figure out a way where we can move forward and not violate the Constitution, you know, you know how to get ahold of me. So we're all trying to figure out the same thing.
Well, not violate the Arizona Supreme Court interpretation of the Constitution and the gift clause. I'm just thinking of the work that many union representatives do on our labor council meetings that we want to get their opinion, right? On our benefits committee, we want that input. And in our benefits committee is a perfect example because we have our labor unions represented there. But we also have employees that are not in labor unions. And so how does that work? Employees that are not in labor unions are being paid to be there? I'm not sure. So I agree, I think we need to be as innovative and creative as possible. And if other cities are looking at what benefit and what example of union activities that meet the gift clause test, I want to know.
First, Councilwoman Lee and then Councilmember Cunningham.
And that's what the motion directs.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to Councilmember Cunningham, Councilmember Ulrich for bringing this forward. I know I've had a lot of conversations with our union leadership and some of my peers on this issue. So I'm really happy that we're having the ability to talk about this. And Mayor, I appreciate you reinforcing our values, our collective values. And clearly, we do not agree with the court's decision. So this has been a really challenging situation. And we can't do our job as mayor and council and make sure that we're delivering services to the residents without every single one of our employees. And so for me, every interaction, to your point, Councilmember Cunningham, that I've had with the union leadership is in service of the public. It is to help us focus on recruitment and retention and all the things essential for us to deliver services. So I just wanted to echo my support for finding a creative solution. I also appreciate your not throwing ideas out on the table. I have a few that I really want to spout out, but I'm going to keep those under my hat and talk to you guys about it because there may be some loopholes that we could consider as well. But just throwing my support for finding unique solutions to work around this because I highly value the benefit that our unions bring to the table. And we can't do anything without their support and understanding what the folks on the ground are really experiencing and what we need to provide for them. So I'll definitely be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Dahl and then Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be supporting the motion. And it's so very frustrating to be in this position and be at the hands of a few conservative judges and the moneyed interests of the Goldwater Institute in the Maricopa area, dictating how we deal with our respected workers here in Tucson. A nerdy question. If there is a bank for donating hours for release time, in this case, does it have to be within the department? I noticed John Kamek's not here. Could Water Department, someone from the Water Department donate a couple hours to the police bank?
Councilmember Dahl, mayor and council. That hasn't how it's been structured in the past, but I don't see a reason why it couldn't be.
Thank you. I'm just really interested in offline getting a deeper understanding of the tests for public purpose. I think we're getting screwed by bad thinking. And if, besides debating it in this, I want to take it to the media and let them know that we're getting such a raw deal. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham.
One other thing, I'm just curious about how we're not being found in violation of the contract we have. Like that's the other piece I'm worried about. Like how are we not violating the contract we already have with the unions?
So the, each of the MOUs have a provision that says, if any of these provisions are invalidated by a decision of a court of competent jurisdiction, blah, 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 then that provision is severed from the remainder of the agreement. But the employer has to give notice to the labor organization to get together, meet and confer, to try and negotiate a replacement provision. So that's what, exactly what we did. We gave notice to the unions. I engaged in that correspondence back and forth with the Public Safety Union's attorney. We engaged in meet and confer. We were already in or about to go in to meet and confer with APSME actually at the time. And the new agreement provides for unpaid release time. So in that instance, it was resolved through that issue. But beyond that, we've been in ongoing meet and confer with, in particular, TPOA for several months now. It was also in that context where I said, you know, if that brings the legal issue to a head in terms of us suspending the payment of the release time, you know, file in Superior Court and we're happy to litigate the case over there.
So this is my last piece and I'm just going to tell people all this because it's what I'm going to be doing for the next few days. There's a term that goes around called Dr. Google. When you, before you go to the ER, you check your symptoms and all that just to make sure that the doctor's got it right or the, or whatever. I want you guys to all Google lawyer and see what we can find because there's got to be some provisions that can help us with this. It's not an easy one, but it's all hands on deck. So that's it for me.
So just to clarify in terms of what you talked about, Mike, and again, I know that you believe in mayor and council's vision and what previous mayor and councils have done in terms of working with our labor groups. I know that you are attorney and have to interpret the law based on what the Arizona Supreme Court and other courts interpret those laws to be. So I'm not, I'm not accusing, I'm trying to not be accusatory. I personally believe that we jumped too soon, too quickly, as opposed to having this conversation and trying to figure out a way. But besides that, just to clarify, what the possibility of not calling it release time and basically designated the, let's just say, the president of APSME being, doing city work to be able to help us with, like, for example, the benefits committee and help the city of Tucson with participating in labor council meetings or representing employees at disciplinary proceedings? You're saying that we could designate not a person, but a position designated by APSME as the president to be able to do that work? Not in release time, is that what I'm hearing?
No. Those are exactly along the list of activities that were the subject matter in the case. And we're not going to get around the holding in this case by just calling it something else and doing the same thing. But, you know, with the direction from the motion, we're, and it's not like we're just starting to try to figure this out. We've been trying to deal with this for a year almost. And we'll continue to do so. And if the, if the Phoenix financial analysis reveals something useful, we'll take advantage of that.
Alrighty. And Vice Mayor, and your, the last question, we have to move on.
I guess I'm just thinking out loud right now as we're talking about this bank and people contributing to it. And it was reminding me before we had parental leave, that you had to use vacation, you had to use your sick time and then people could donate time. And then we created a parental leave and then we extended parental leave. How does that not get considered a gift? So I'm just trying to think out loud, how could we create some kind of leave that would allow for some of these activities? So that's just trying to think through what we can do in the future.
Thanks, I understand the suggestion. I will say one last thing, I think, on the donated leave model. There are some tax implications in terms of how that's set up that we have to be careful to navigate so we don't cause unintended negative tax consequence to the employees who donate the leave for the use by other employees.
Well, there's a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries, thank you so much, really appreciate it. Alrighty, we move on to item five.
Update on City of Tucson's general plan, Plan Tucson 2025.
Time has been set aside for mayor and council to review and discuss the City of Tucson's general plan, Plan Tucson 2025. A separate item has been placed on the regular agenda for mayor and council to consider adoption of Plan Tucson 2025 as the City of Tucson's general plan. Mr. Manager.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, thanks for the opportunity to bring you to the finish line on yet another pretty important part of our business as a city. This will be our final study session item on putting Plan Tucson forward to the voters later tonight for November decision-making. And we've come a long way. I think you've all had a lot of familiarity with Plan Tucson. And in this last couple of weeks, since our public hearing was held and closed last meeting, we've done some final language revisions that are presented to you in your materials. We even have one more for you that we'll mention today. But wait, there's more, but I think you'll like it. And so without further ado, I'll turn it over to Corn Manning.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of council. Yes, this is an item you've heard about frequently over the past two years. Plan Tucson is just wrapping up after more than two years of very dedicated community input and engagement. And the plan that you have reviewed is a result of really focused feedback we've gotten from our community and I think really reflects our community's goals and aspirations for the future. Mayor and council held a public hearing as required by state law on the general plan update on May 20th. And at that hearing, there were several members of the public who spoke and provided comment and suggestions, as well as several letters that were received from stakeholder groups in advance with some additional suggestions. So mayor and council at that hearing did close the public hearing and then requested that staff incorporate some of those suggested revisions to the plan and come back with a revised version of the general plan. So that's what we've done. We've made a number of edits and revisions over the past couple of weeks. And as the city manager mentioned, have had some further conversation with some stakeholders and have a couple, one other suggestion that we're going to make to you today. So some of the revisions that we made that are reflected in the updated draft that you have in your materials is a number of suggestions from the Tucson Pima County Historic Commission. They actually put together a task force to provide suggestions on Plan Tucson. We worked really closely with them over the course of this plan update. They had a few additional recommendations that they made at the public hearing and we have worked with them to make those revisions. The Southern Arizona Home Builders Association also spoke at the hearing and submitted a letter and they had a number of recommended revisions. So we did make edits to four of the policies based on their suggestions to recognize some of the need for flexibility around home construction and development policies. We had also previously added a new policy to the land use section based on Saba's suggestions and based on the Planning Commission recommendation. We also heard from the Tucson Neighborhood Undergrounding Coalition at the hearing and they requested some revisions to some of the goals to reflect more recognition of the aesthetics of our community and highlights that that's one of our community's goals, is to promote the aesthetics of our community. And so that is a land use policy that we had previously added following the Planning Commission hearing, which was to protect and enhance the aesthetic attractiveness of Tucson's streetscapes along the arterials, collectors and within our neighborhoods. So we have added a new policy to the plan to reflect that intent, to really beautify our community. So the one suggested revision that is not yet reflected in the draft that was in your materials is a revision to Land Use Policy 23. This is a suggestion that came from the Coalition for Sonoran Desert Protection and they really wanted to strengthen this plant, this policy around the conservation land system. So over the past few weeks, there's been some dialogue between that coalition as well as input from Saba. Saba also submitted a comment related to this policy. So we've tried to kind of blend those goals. So the suggested revision to that policy is to apply the Conservation Land System map and guidelines in a flexible manner during entitlement reviews to promote residential and commercial development while protecting natural resources. So this policy would apply to rezonings and similar discretionary actions. And I just want to highlight that the general plan is meant to set high-level policy guidance. So that's what we've tried to really reflect in this policy. We do anticipate that this policy would then need to be refined over time as we put it into practice. So there will likely be some further conversation with stakeholders as we really refine what that looks like and kind of use this on a case-by-case basis. Of course, working with mayor and council and stakeholders on how we implement that. But we think this really reflects the dual goals that we hear from mayor and council of promoting development in the places that make sense while also protecting our most valuable natural resources. So that is the suggested revision from staff and based on that stakeholder input. The update to the general plan is on the regular agenda tonight for mayor and council consideration. And then pending mayor and council adoption, that would be the revised plan would be sent to the state attorney general's office per state law. And then we would move into the next phase of outreach, which is our voter education and outreach campaign leading up to the November 2025 election.
Thank you so much for the presentation, really appreciate it. I don't know if my colleagues have any questions, but I did want to thank the entire team for their work. And I just want to recognize, and I know I have them here somewhere, starting of course with our city manager, Tim Tamir, Christina Swallow, Corinne Manning, the interim director of Planning and Development Services, Daniel Bersak, and Cesar Acosta. I know he did a lot of underground, on the ground work for this. Amanda Smith, Ian Wan, Jessica Johnsek, Nicholas Martel, Ina Ronquillo, Aaron Cowman and Jasmine Chan. I know Jasmine worked on the initial piece of Plan Tucson because we've taken three years to put this plan together. And really, to be honest, it shows. It shows that you all did the legwork to meet with neighborhoods and business leaders and housing, affordable housing individuals. I mean, it really does. So thank you for your work. I don't have any questions. Appreciate your work until even last night to find language to include the CLS in the general plan.
Any questions? Councilmember Dahl and then Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we don't need a motion, no, no. My appreciation to you all, it's taken a long time. I remember being briefed at the very beginning of this process. And this is a revision of an existing basically strategic plan. And I was thinking, if I was in business and someone said, hey, we're going to take three years to revise our plan, I would say, you're fired. But I can see that the engagement has been really successful and I like what we've come up with. And I'm wondering, how soon after we pass this will you be starting on the next revision?
Well, and we took three years. Some of it because it's good practice to be able to engage the community, but there was this little thing called COVID-19 that we couldn't do the planned engagement. So we had to wait a little bit to be able to. And even then, we started engaging via Zoom and Teams. So anyway, when do we start putting the pieces to work?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, the implementation, the embracing, the deployment of this Plan Tucson will begin immediately upon the voters' decision-making. And the revisions to it will be eight or nine years hence.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Cunningham?
The big discussion last, a couple of weeks ago was about the dark skies provision. I want to know, I want to be, I've had to step out for a second. I want to be sure that that provision has been addressed and ensure that we're protecting our cosmology community. and ensure that we're protecting our cosmology community or astronomical. Cosmology. It's cosmology. So cosmologists, the foremost cosmologists, well, one of the foremost cosmologists in the United States is Max Tegmark, my mom's first cousin. So, and his website says cosmologist. So that's where I'm going with it.
Yeah, so Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, yeah, so throughout the process, we've really had the dark sky community as a part of really all of our working groups. Really, May, who spoke at the public hearing, has been at many and many of our events. And we really have worked in tandem with them to make sure that the policies reflect the importance of the dark sky community. The, I think they had mentioned a certification. That is really something that does occur outside of the general plan and is something that it really does generally, it normally doesn't really apply to kind of larger urban areas, but it's something that definitely, I think the policies of this plan and the goals and policies give us the direction in order to pursue that certification.
Any others? Alrighty, thank you so much. See you later tonight. Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we move on to item six.
State and national legislation, executive orders, and direction to any associated litigation.
Time has been set aside for mayor and council to receive an update on state and national legislation, executive orders, and administrative and agency orders, an update on federal, state, and regional committees, and an update on direction relating to any associated litigation. Before I seat the mic over to Stephanie, I just wanted to begin by just giving a little bit of a highlight and information on what's happening with the Pima Council on Aging. So since the last council meeting, we have been made aware that several of our local nonprofits, including the Pima Council on Aging, will be forced to end distribution of meals to seniors in our community. These are the consequences of the decisions by the Trump administration that is cutting left and right, especially on social services. This is especially hard for seniors as we head into the summer when higher utility bills make it harder for people to afford groceries and medication, to pay for electric bills. Since last night, my office, the City of Tucson Housing First, and Community Safety, Health, and Wellness teams, as well as city managers' teams, have been working closely with staff at the Fred G. Acosta Job Corps, which is facing the devastating closure of the federal Job Corps program. They were just informed of cuts to their entire program. This closure is leaving 260 students ages 16 to 24, unemployed, unhoused, and without services. Programs like these provide training and services to young people, preparing them for good-paying jobs and self-sufficiency. And it helps disrupting the cycles of poverty and violence. Ending these services by ending federal funding is counterproductive to keeping our economy and families strong. Another thing that has been happening in our community, the Department of Homeland Security has released a list of sanctuary cities. While this is happening at the national level, we continue to see actions in our local community that are causing fear and uncertainty. In Phoenix and in Tucson, we are seeing people who are trying to follow the law see their cases dismissed and then be detained on the steps of the courts, detained and deported. We have seen ICE or HSI agents posing as utility workers in our community. I want to remind all of our residents that there are Know Your Rights information available, and those resources have been updated to include Know Your Rights for Immigration Court. Organizers, organizations such as ACLU, National Immigrants Justice Center, and Catholic Community Services have information available for anyone that needs it. I would plead with our residents to continue to contact your congressional representatives to share your concerns with them. I also want to remind our community that there are organizations that can help you, especially if there's need with law concerns. I also want to share my experience at the Global Economic Forum powered by Bloomberg in Qatar. Bringing investments to Tucson is one of the things that I am responsible for. I feel that as mayor, I want to work on economic development and job creation in our community. I have done so since my time as a council member, and economic development is super holistic in my view as to how we invest. And I had an incredible opportunity invited by the U.S. Embassy of Qatar to, with four other mayors, to go to Qatar and participate in the Global Economic Forum. I participated with more than 1,500 other people from all over the world, letting them know that Tucson is open for business. Some of the incredible meetings that we had besides the Economic Forum was visiting their education city. I met with the president of higher education, Francisco Marmolejo, who, by the way, I did not know until I got there, taught for 16 years at the University of Arizona, has a huge interest in bringing the University of Arizona to Qatar, along with other universities that are already teach there, George Mason, George Washington. Texas A&amp;M are some of the universities that are already teaching in Qatar. I also met with General Dickens and troops from Arizona stationed at Al-Udeid Air Base. It was one of the best, I think, pieces of work that I did representing the City of Tucson. It was a great lunch, eating grilled cheese and apple juice with our air men and women and asking them about what they do, but also giving them an opportunity about their, you know, satisfying their curiosity of what a mayor of Tucson does as well. It was really awesome to be there. I also met with Ambassador of the United States to Qatar, Ambassador Timmy Davis. Those discussions with him were about economic development opportunities and the priorities of Qataris in terms of relationship building with the United States and very specifically with mayors around the United States. I attended a dinner with the delegation of mayors that I went to with Qatari Business Group. It was a business group of investors. This provided investors and mayors the opportunity to explore possible areas of economic development and begin developing strategic relationships. I've always explained to people interested in bringing their businesses here in Tucson, which, by the way, was really funny because while we were there, it was about 108, 110, 112 degrees. And the first thing that Qataris wanted to know is how we were dealing with the heat. And I'm like, easy peasy. I come from the desert, and you would feel right at home in Tucson. And, you know, I usually talk to people in my elevator pitch that the City of Tucson is blessed with being 60 miles away from our number-one trading partner, which is Mexico. We're connected by rail, by interstate with Mexico, which does a lot of manufacturing work. And geographically, we're blessed because of our proximity to Mexico, but also our connection via interstate, rail, and air with the rest of the country. And so that kind of perks some ears and eyebrows, which is always good for me because I want to make sure that the City of Tucson is on the map and that we put ourselves in sight for possible foreign investment. One, a couple of other meetings that we did was, as you all know, Qatar hosted the FIFA World Cup in 2022. And we met with Minister of Homeland Security, which really coordinated the safety and security of teams and fans alike. They offered help. I know that the City of Tucson and Pima County are a host site, we're a training site for the FIFA World Cup 2026 that's happening in the United States. And so we had those discussions as well as like fan management with another P, with another area of their, of their government. These are just a few examples of the work that I did. I appreciate the support of Visit Tucson, the Chamber of Southern Arizona, our own economic initiatives team, and our city manager for helping prepare me to make sure that I represented Tucson in the best way possible. So just wanted to report on that. And Mr. Manager, the mic is yours.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Mayor, for taking that trip and representing our city so well there. I know we'll reap the benefits of that. Nobody does it better than you on telling Tucson's story. With that, I'll be turning it over to Stephanie Zamora. Sometimes the state legislation is kind of quiet, and sometimes there's a lot of fireworks going on. Right now, we're in the middle of the kind of a quiet period, but that doesn't mean there's nothing to share. So I'll turn it over to you, Stephanie.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. As the city manager said, this is a brief update on federal and state legislative affairs. And I'll start with the federal level. The Trump administration has presented its budget proposal, also known as the One Big Beautiful Bill. This legislation is a comprehensive budget proposal that combines tax provisions, spending priorities, and reductions to several federal programs such as Medicaid and the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. It passed the House by a narrow margin and is advancing through the budget reconciliation process in the Senate in the coming days, and leaders are targeting a July 4th passage. In parallel, the House Appropriations Committee will be marking up all 12 fiscal year '26 spending bills over the next 10 weeks. This would advance a budget framework that reflects the administration's proposed 17% cuts to non-defense spending. Other notable updates at the federal level include that FEMA has begun denying and delaying hazard mitigation grants for states following disasters. These grants fund long-term resilience efforts like flood prevention and safe rooms. The change may reduce funding available for communities, for community preparedness projects if this continues. And additionally, Senators Padilla and Warren and Representative Waters have led a bicameral call to fully fund emergency housing voucher program. This supports individuals and families at risk of homelessness. HUD issued a warning that the program could run out of funds due to rising rents, and continued funding is essential to keep recipients housed, including those in Tucson. As the city manager mentioned, at the state level, the update is much more brief. The Senate has recessed, and the House is set to go back into session tomorrow. The budget is on the horizon, and we'll closely monitor that with potentially more to report by the next council meeting as the legislature aims to complete the budget by the end of this month. And with that, Honorable Mayor, that concludes the update. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Rankin?
No questions or comments on that. I was just going to mention, I don't have any new updates with respect to the litigation which we've joined, but we are under the orders suspending the implementation of the unlawful conditions that we've joined in the challenge on. And as part of that, I just want to do a quick thank you. Folks are really grinding on this stuff, and not just on the litigation, but on the daily review of incoming grants, grant opportunities, grant contracts, grant awards, NOFOs that are posted. You know, the work that's being done in Anne's shop and HCD and DTM, the police with Lynn and others, the manager's office, including Stephanie, and then my folks who are just, I'm glad they don't do billable hours because we wouldn't be able to afford it. I mean that. But people also don't understand how much work the mayor and the mayor's office is doing with respect to the federal funding issues. This landscape changes every single day. And what you think you knew last week is different this week. The number of hours and amount of time Charlene, other staff, and the mayor herself are putting in. It's, and with no end in sight, but we're carrying out the direction of the council and defending our interests in the litigation, but it's about a lot more than litigation. That's just what I wanted to put on the record.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, I mean, we're all putting extra hours. I appreciate your words in terms of the work that we have to do. Really, nobody understands. But absolutely, there's a lot of time and effort put into it. And I just wanted to give you all an update on the Job Corps situation. There were 10 youth or more, I believe there were more like 25 youth that were possibly going to be left, that were left homeless, really. Since last night, my staff at the mayor's office started working with Lane Mandl and Brandy Champion, as well as Lee Hopkins from Housing Person, our Community Safety, Health, and Wellness, to look for spaces and try and communicate with the, with the youth left homeless, 11 youth. We were able to be, reach 11 youth, and we will be getting the 11 youth that were entering into homelessness housed as soon as possible through El Portal, which is the City of Tucson. One of the Housing First grants will pay their rental assistance for a year while we get them stabilized into jobs and have them do a savings plan. So wanted to give you an update to just let you know that the City of Tucson, my office, and our city manager, as well as other teams, are really trying to do as much as we possibly can to pick up the cruel policies, really, from the Trump administration, and that we will continue to do that. We know that we've lost federal funds for seniors, and I've scheduled an appointment with the Executive Director of the Pima Council on Aging. This, this work that we have to do are in times when we find ourselves in budget deficits. And so we will see how we can partner with other jurisdictions as well as private partners. I did call Humberto Lopez from the Center of Opportunity, and they received a few of the youth at the Center of Opportunity as well. And they're taken care of and in a safe place. So just wanted to give you an update on that.
Your Honor, I had a quick follow-up question. Do we know who owns that campus? Is it federally owned? Is it a private contracting company?
Job Corps?
Yeah.
Not sure. I believe Job Corps was created by the federal government in the 60s, but I believe it's a nonprofit. So...
I think we ought to find out who actually owns the parcel.
Okay, yeah, that's a good idea. Alrighty, if there's no more questions. Item seven, does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Harold Bellwright Agenda item, Your Honor.
What is it?
Harold Bellwright Agenda. Please remove that from consent.
Which one is that one?
The park, the park covenant with the neighborhood.
Okay. You'll find that one, right? Item eight, does anyone have any items for future agendas? Already seeing non-study session is adjourned, and regular session will begin at 5:30. And then the next study session is scheduled for Tuesday, June 17th, 2025. Thank you all so much. Really appreciate you. Really appreciate you.
[811.38]
Council will stand in session. Council will stand in session. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Yulick?
Here.
Mayor Romero?
Here.
Before we go to item two, the city attorney will go over the rules of decorum for mayor and council meetings. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just didn't want to come up on my screen. Arizona's open meeting laws provide that members of the public may attend and listen to proceedings during tonight's public meeting of the mayor and council. Arizona law also allows the mayor and council to enforce rules and procedures for public attendance at the meeting to ensure orderly behavior and to prevent unnecessary interference with the meeting. Here are the rules that apply. The rules require decorum and orderly conduct by the members of the audience. No person attending the meeting shall engage in conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting, including any statements or conduct that interrupt persons who might be addressing the mayor and council, or that disrupt the discussions of the mayor and council themselves. The mayor has the authority to ensure compliance with the rules of orderly conduct. If disorderly or disruptive conduct continues after a warning, and this is that first warning, the mayor may direct the removal of persons from the chambers or recess the meeting itself if necessary. If disruptive behavior makes it necessary to clear the chambers, the persons who disrupted the meeting will not be allowed to return to the chambers for the remainder of tonight's meeting. And as a final note, just be aware that interfering with or preventing the lawful public meeting from being carried out in an orderly manner not only violates these rules of participation, but also Title 13 of the Arizona revised statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item two. Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be given by Pastor Larry Mungia from the SOBER Project. After the invocation, I'd like to ask you that you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, hello, everybody. It's been a minute. Haven't been here in a while. It's good to see you. Grateful, Ms. Mayor, City Council. Senior Perez, welcome. Taking on a real role from an old buddy of mine, Senior Freeman. So, Ms. Yurk, who ran this town for a while, we've done some good stuff. It's always a pleasure to come be part of what my city's going through. I always say that the bones of my relatives are buried in this valley. Been here a while. So if you're so inclined, y'all, bow your heads. Lord, we come to you. And I ask a special blessing on this city council. Lord, that you would draw them to you, that they would come to you for counsel, for wisdom, for knowledge, for insight, so that the choices and decisions they made for the city of Tucson, Lord, would be of glory to you. Lord, this city is a shining gem in your crown, Lord. And I ask you to continue blessing Tucson. Men, the women, the families, the generations, and the newcomers, Lord, welcome, love on them, but most of all, Lord, bring us into this next generation complete. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Council will stand in session. Council will stand in session. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Yulik?
Mayor Romero?
Here.
Before we go to item two, the city attorney will go over the rules of decorum for mayor and council meetings. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just didn't want to come up on my screen. Arizona's open meeting laws provide that members of the public may attend and listen to proceedings during tonight's public meeting of the mayor and council. Arizona law also allows the mayor and council to enforce rules and procedures for public attendance at the meeting to ensure orderly behavior and to prevent unnecessary interference with the meeting. Here are the rules that apply. The rules require decorum and orderly conduct by the members of the audience. No person attending the meeting shall engage in conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting, including any statements or conduct that interrupt persons who might be addressing the mayor and council, or that disrupt the discussions of the mayor and council themselves. The mayor has the authority to ensure compliance with the rules of orderly conduct. If disorderly or disruptive conduct continues after a warning, and this is that first warning, the mayor may direct the removal of persons from the chambers or recess the meeting itself if necessary. If disruptive behavior makes it necessary to clear the chambers, the persons who disrupted the meeting will not be allowed to return to the chambers for the remainder of tonight's meeting. And as a final note, just be aware that interfering with or preventing the lawful public meeting from being carried out in an orderly manner not only violates these rules of participation, but also Title 13 of the Arizona revised statutes.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Item two.
Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Larry Mungia from the Sober Project. After the invocation, I'd like to ask you that you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, hello, everybody. It's been a minute. Haven't been here in a while. It's good to see you. Grateful, Ms. Mayor, City Council. Senior Perez, welcome. Taking on a real role from an old buddy of mine, Senior Freeman, so Ms. Yurk, who ran this town for a while, we've done some good stuff. It's always a pleasure to come be part of what my city's going through. I always say that the bones of my relatives are buried in this valley. Been here a while. So if you're so inclined, y'all, bow your heads. Lord, we come to you. And I ask a special blessing on this city council. Lord, that you would draw them to you, that they would come to you for counsel, for wisdom, for knowledge, for insight, so that the choices and decisions they made for the city of Tucson, Lord, would be a glory to you. Lord, this city is a shining, a shining gem in your crown, Lord. And I ask you to continue blessing Tucson. Men, the women, the families, the generations, and the newcomers, Lord, welcome, love on them, but most of all, Lord, bring us into this next generation complete. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and under His law, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, guys. God bless. Take care of business for us. See you next time.
Thank you for blessing us with your presence.
Oh, shut up.
I have three wonderful proclamations today. Let me see. And as always, I'd like to invite my colleagues on the council, if you want to join me up at front. Our first proclamation will be proclaiming June 2025 to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And so let me see if I have the people that are going to join us. I don't have the list, so anyone that's here for LGBTQ Pride Month, join me up at front, and please don't be shy. Alrighty. Awesome. What a beautiful turnout. Thank you so much. So it is with great pride, no pun intended, that I'm here with my colleagues on the council to be able to proclaim June 2025 to be LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Tucson and the mayor and council. We appreciate all of the work that our LGBTQ plus community and allies do to make sure that we bring equality and justice into our beautiful city. So let's see. Who wants to hold this proclamation just? And we made extra copies of the proclamation for as many of you as we possibly can. Alrighty, so the, let's see, I have a guest list, but not names, just organizations. So we have Tucson Pride, the Southern Arizona AIDS Foundation represented, Senior Pride, T-HAN, the Southern Arizona Gender Alliance, Tucson Queen Story, the Mexican consulate in Tucson, Amity Foundation, Revelier?
Reveli.
Reveli, I always do this. I say it in Spanish and French. The Tucson Commission on LGBTQ plus Issues, the Tucson LGBT Chamber of Commerce, otherwise known as Gamber, IBTS Tucson, the Arts Foundation, folks from local queer-owned businesses, and all others, especially allies that join us today. So on behalf of the city of Tucson and the office of the mayor, whereas the uprising at New York's Stonewall Inn in June of 1969 sparked a liberation movement, a call to action that continues to inspire us to lift up to our nation's promise of equality, liberty, and justice for all. And whereas in the 55 years since the Stonewall riots, Pride has been recognized as a time to uplift and celebrate the lesbian, gay, bisexual, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, to recall the trials this community has endured, and to rejoice in the triumphs of trailblazing individuals who have bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality. Whereas Tucson's first Pride event was held at Himmel Park in June 28th of 1977, one year after the beating and murder of Richard Heekin Jr. in a parking lot outside Tucson's Stonewall Tavern on North First Avenue. And whereas also in 1977, the city of Tucson was among the first U.S. cities to pass an anti-discrimination ordinance protecting the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and queer people in Tucson. And whereas in February of 1999, the Tucson City Council passed an amendment to the Human Relations Ordinance banning discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations based on gender identity. And whereas the current city of Tucson mayor and council and city officials that have served before this mayor and council have taken positions in opposition to legislation that would limit freedom of expression, reproductive freedom, and that would harm our LGBTQ plus community. And whereas the city of Tucson acknowledges that we must continue to be vigilant and tirelessly work to honor, support, and defend the civil rights and freedoms granted not only for the LGBTQ plus community, but for all of our residents as we seek positive change to eliminate sexism, racism, bigotry, and prejudice of all types. And whereas we will continue to strive towards progress on being a more just, equitable, and welcoming community where all people, no matter their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are able to enjoy affirming lives in Tucson. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 2025 to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month in this community, and call for all of us to support our LGBTQ plus friends, family members, and neighbors in building an inclusive community where everyone can prosper and thrive. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this third day of June 2025. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. My name is Michael Webb. I'm the executive director for Reveli Men's Chorus, and we're celebrating our 30th anniversary. Mayor Romero, I actually have a little gift for you. It's our 30th anniversary shirt. And everyone behind? And while, and while that is a small token of our appreciation, in this day and age, in this political climate, it takes strong leadership to stand against what I think is a momentum in the wrong direction. And so if I can have everyone's applause in thanking Mayor Romero and our city council for supporting us.
And we have extra copies of this. Anyone else want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Romero, for this recognition, city council for this recognition, standing with the LGBTQ plus community in ways that matter. As Audre Lorde once said, "It is not our differences that divide us, it's our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences." We are grateful for this moment, and we don't take it lightly. Being seen, acknowledged, and supported by city leadership means something not just to one of us, but to all of us who have gone unseen for far too long. We are proud to be here today, but we are also tired. We're tired of showing up in rooms where humanity is still up for debate. We're tired of wondering which side of the room celebrates us and which side whispers about us and allows our hearts to grow bitter of our presence. We wish we could just live. We wish we could just walk down the street holding our partner's hand without fear, without ridicule, without feeling like we have to make ourselves smaller, to be safe. We wish we didn't have to fight to be seen, to be respected, to just be. But here we are, and we've always been here, and we are not going anywhere. We are the educators, we are nonprofit leaders, we are ones helping this community, serving in businesses, showing up in hospitals, and yes, fighting for freedoms in the military, even when some still choose not to fight for ours. We are not asking for special treatment, we are demanding equal dignity, and we are no less human than anyone else in this room. So if you're one of the people feeling uncomfortable of this proclamation, this is the reason Pride Month still matters. This is not just a celebration, it's a reminder that our fight is far from over, and this proclamation is not a performance, it's a promise that we will continue showing up, speaking out, and building a world where no one asks, has to shrink to survive. We are honored to stand here as part of a vibrant, resilient LGBTQ plus QIA community, one that continues to lead with love, courage, strength, and we won't stop until everyone is free and lives fully and openly. Have your pride, and thank you all for seeing us.
Thank you all. Alrighty, we're going to now move on to the Arizona Jobs with Justice Day. There's always time for a selfie. Alrighty. So guest list, Steve Valencia, please join us up here, Cecilia Valdez, Sandy Ochoa, Cynthia Diaz, Paul Stapleton Smith, Marta Reyes, Angela Reyes, Shannon Foley, Sarah Roberts, Connie Sadler Nelson, Michael Carnahan, and anyone else that wants to join us today? Who wants to hold this? La Niñas? Steve? There you go, sir. So happy that you all are here with us today. Happy that we're celebrating 35 years of service to our community and service to workers. So happy that, that we can get to do this. Just give us a second, and then we'll let you, we'll let you go. Oh, Kenneth C. just joined. So whereas Arizona Jobs with Justice has served as a powerful force for economic and social justice in Arizona for 35 years, advocating for the rights and dignity of workers, immigrants, and marginalized communities. And whereas since its founding in 1989, Arizona Jobs with Justice has brought together labor unions, community organizations, students, and faith leaders in a dynamic coalition committing to building power through grassroots organizing, leadership development, and strategic campaigns. And whereas Steve Valencia has been a vital and amazing leader within Arizona Jobs with Justice for over three decades, playing an effective role in advancing policies that protect working families, promote equity, and ensure that every Arizonan has access to fair wages, safe workplaces, and a voice in the decisions that affect their lives. And whereas Arizona Jobs with Justice has stood firm in the face of adversity, navigating political challenges and systemic injustices with courage, integrity, and a steadfast commitment to collective action and social transformation. And whereas the city of Tucson recognizes and celebrates the enduring impact of Arizona Jobs with Justice in uplifting communities, fostering solidarity, and promoting a more just and inclusive society for all. And whereas the 35th anniversary of Arizona Jobs with Justice provides an opportunity to honor its legacy, celebrate its victories, and recommit to the work of justice that lies ahead. Now, therefore, I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2025, as Arizona Jobs with Justice Day in the city of Tucson. And I encourage all residents to recognize and support the ongoing efforts of Arizona Jobs with Justice in creating a more equitable and empowered Arizona for generations to come. And witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Tucson to be affixed this third day of June 2025. Felicidades. Steve Valencia?
I just wanted to say that to hear we, with us today with Arizona Jobs with Justice is your Josefine Awamada South Side Worker Center, Starbucks Workers United, the Bricklayers Union Allied Trades, Pima Area Labor Federation, the Postal Workers, and the Letter Carriers Union in this little group right here. That's it? We're going to continue, we're going to continue struggling, right? As long as there are, as long as there are jobs, as long as there are companies and bosses, I believe that we will continue our work. Because the dynamic between those who have money and those who don't is really the central point of why we are involved. We want to get what we deserve in terms of the profits. All the profits do not belong to the rich, they belong to the people that create that wealth. And we're here to say that we are going to continue in this fight to get more concessions, more equality, more justice in our working lives. That's what I want to say.
And all I want to say, that it's been a pleasure in more than two decades that I've known you, Steve Valencia, in marching, rallying, canvassing, and all-out rebel rousing with you and most of you that are here. Thank you for all the work that you all do. Muchas gracias. My colleagues on the council, if you want to join me, we're going to take a picture. Thank you so much. So our last, but certainly not least proclamation is for Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I'd like to have you please join me in welcoming our community members, doctors, and public safety leaders representing the following organizations and departments. Banner, University Medical Centers, Level One Trauma Center, and their hospital-linked violence intervention program, if you want to join me all. Homicide Survivors, which supports the families of murder victims. Goodwill of Southern Arizona and the Village Program, which provides community violence intervention. The city of Tucson's Community Safety, Health, and Wellness Program. And I know that there's representatives and supporters from our very own Tucson Police Department, so join me all up here. Hi. Thank you all for the important work that you do. Really appreciate you. So on behalf of the city of Tucson and the office of the mayor, anyone want to hold this? Okay, so let me read the proclamation. Whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence, and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Arizona has 1,290 gun deaths per year, with a rate of 17.2 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $15.9 billion each year, of which 253.2 million is paid by taxpayers, Arizona has the 18th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Tucson, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2nd, 2023, to recognize the 26th birthday of Hadia Pendleton, which was born in June 2nd, 1997, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange. And whereas in collaboration with law enforcement, community organizations, and engaging in dialogue with our neighbors, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access to them. And encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Whereas the City of Tucson's Violence Interruption and Vitalization Action Program is a holistic, data-driven, and evidenced-informed approach to address gun violence in specific locations across the city that have experienced high levels of gun-related violence. Viva has already shown great success in reducing gun violence in our city. Now therefore, I, Regina Romero, Mayor of the City of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim June 3rd, 2025 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in this community and encourage residents to support local efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cast the seal of the City of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this third day of June 2025. Thank you all for your work.
Dr. Stewart, and on behalf of the Banner Hospital Leadership here, Dr. Okerson, Dr. Spencer, and Dr. Colosimo, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. As the trauma leaders at Banner, Main Campus and South, we see the effects of gun violence almost daily, you know. But it's nice to partner with the city, our local law enforcement, pre-hospital providers, and our community partners to address this problem. We're trying to always put ourselves out of business as trauma surgeons and this is just one step towards doing that.
Mayor and Council, Monique Valley. I serve as the Board Chair for Homicide Survivors after losing my sister-in-law 10 years ago this coming July. Homicide Survivors is supporting over 2,000 families in our community. Households, family members, from supporting them in court to being there for all the support from the beginning. I couldn't have made it, our family couldn't have made it without the staff and that team there. So also to Mayor and Council, thank you for your continued support. We have to do better. Law enforcement, we appreciate your support. We can do better. To our folks in hospitals, alright? Thank you for what you're doing. But no one in our community should ever lose their loved one to homicide. As a community, we have got to stand up and we have to raise the call. We can and must do better for our loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. We want to take a picture, if that's okay? So if you all want to squish in?
Let's make sure to look at our other front right here. Front. There you go.
Thank you so much. Thank you all so much for being here. And I'll give them a few seconds to to leave if they'd like to. Alright, I do know we have item 2D, which is personal appointments? Item 2D?
Appointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions.
City Manager's Communication Number 162, dated June 3rd, is received into and made part of the record. We don't have any appointments in this meeting. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none. We move on to item 3.
Mayor and Council Report, Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 161, dated June 3rd, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the Mayor and Council to report on current events. These are to be current event of activities within the community, not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Yep, alrighty, so I'm gonna start with the Vice Mayor and Ward 1.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the public know that this past Saturday, May 31st, Ward 1, the mayor's office in the city of Tucson, hosted a successful grand reopening of Joaquin Murrieta Park, drawing over 1,000 attendees. The event celebrated major park improvements, including the West Side's first splash pad, new playgrounds, ball fields, and walking paths. Community members enjoyed carnassada from Wild West Carniceria and frozen treats from Kona Ice and Frozen Delights. I want to thank our Parks and Rec staff for their amazing work and making this happen. So Laura and the team. And Mayor, thank you for close to 15 years of stewarding this project. And it was such a great day to finally see it come to fruition. So thank you for all that you've done for our West Side community. This coming Sunday, June 8th, at 8:00 a.m., our office is hosting our second Sunday VC Burros Bike Ride along with Fuga. This is typically our pride ride. Join us for a free mobility event with a bike ride in Bimburritos from Los Jarritos. We meet at the Ward 1 office, 940 West Alameda Street, at 8:00 a.m. That same Sunday, the Tucson Museum of Art at 10:00 a.m. hosts their second Sunday's Family Day. Families have the opportunity to make art, join in the family yoga, and enjoy pay-what-you-wish admission. The Tucson Museum of Art is located at 140 North Main Avenue. And then finally, Monday, June 16th, from 5:00 to 7:00, join the Ward 1 office for our bi-monthly Bike Check 1-3. This is an offering sponsored by Fuga and hosted by our office. This event offers free bike evaluations, flat fixes, gear and chain lubrication, seat adjustment, and free lights. We also provide referrals to local bike shops for further support. Bring your bike and make sure that it's in good shape for your summer rides around Tucson. And that is at the Ward 1 office, 940 West Alameda Street. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham?
First, I wanted to congratulate Las Laveras and Arizona Symphonic Winds for another spring series. They played every Saturday in May this year. And we've had about 300 to 400 people per night, per Saturday. It's a great program. We're gonna continue it. There'll be a fall series and we're gonna continue it until it ends. I also wanted to congratulate all of our graduates. We had a lot of, I think I went to three of them this week. I'm at that age where a bunch of my friends' kids are graduating high school, I guess. So I want to congratulate all of our high school and U of A graduates this past May. And finally, and this one's just a little bit interesting. Everybody's pretty familiar with what, with my dad's passing, but he was a huge baseball fan. And Arizona, much to the surprise of the rest of the country, advanced in the superregional this weekend and take on, they traveled to Chapel Hill to take on the University of North Carolina.
Alright, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I hope we, you know, unite as a city and I hope our student athletes from the University of Arizona can represent the city well. But congratulations to Coach Hale, Coach Chip Hale, and the ball club for advancing to the superregionals.
Councilmember Dahl?
Summer has started and it's hot. We had a pool party at Amphib Pool on Saturday and it was great. And there's two more pool parties sponsored by the Ward 3 and Parks and Rec coming up. And I do have a prop. Glitter and everything. The next party is Friday, June 6th, at Jacobs Pool, 1020 West Lynn Street. That park is under construction, but the pool is still open. The third one is at Thompson Pool, 2275 North Fourth Avenue, Wednesday, June 8th. Both are from 4:00 to 7:00. It's gonna be free hot dogs and a lot of fun. Bring your kids.
Sounds really fun, Councilmember Dahl. Councilwoman Lee?
Again, no props and no announcements.
Councilmember Perez?
Lots of fun stuff happening in Ward 5. So Borderlands Theater is having a presentation called No Place Like Home on Saturday, June 7th, at 6:00 p.m. It's an outdoor performance in partnership with Tucson Community Safety, Health, and Wellness and the Avenue 5 Residential Villas. You can hear some real-life stories on survival and resilience of folks who lived through those, through those lived experiences and they also include some live performances. We have our 55th Annual Juneteenth Festival, which is gonna be on June 14th at Keno Sports Complex. Admissions is free. There'll be live entertainment, some cultural exhibits, a kid's zone, car wash, and lots of food. And then Ward 5 personally is hosting our back-to-school backpack event, which will be held on Saturday, July 19th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the El Pueblo Activity Center. We're inviting folks, school-aged children in attendance to receive a backpack and school supplies. And so if you're in need of some goods ahead of the school year, please come and visit. And then actually, on the topic of pools, I'm gonna steal this again. Yeah, and also Pride Month. Quincy Douglas is having our pool opening this Friday at 1:00 p.m. Mayor Romero, I'm joining you. It's exciting. This is a $1.1 million renovation project that was funded through both Prop 407 as well as city investments, I believe from Mayor Romero, maybe Ward 5. But we're very excited about that. That space opening and another phenomenal asset just ahead of the summer heat. So we're excited.
It's gonna be fun. Lots of water events. Councilman? Alrighty, just wanted to give an update to the community. Since Friday, I've heard from residents and community service providers impacted by devastating federal fund cuts to services for youth and senior meals. Senior meals will continue to be served at the City of Tucson Armory Park Senior Center and Freedom Park Center and at community sites around the city. Casa de Encanto, Casa de Pueblo, Posada Live Community Center, and Williams and Clement Center. More information will be on my social media to provide for the community. Since last night, my office, the City of Tucson Housing First and Community Safety, Health, and Wellness Teams have been working closely with the staff at the Fred G. Acosta Job Corps Center, which is facing the devastating closure of this program because the federal government, the Department of Labor, and the Trump administration is cutting all funds to Job Corps. This closure is leaving 260 students ages 16 to 24 unemployed, unhoused, and without services. We are working closely with community partners in Pima County to make sure that these young people are connected to resources and housed during this critical time. I'm deeply saddened by the news of the center's closure and the impact it's having on students, staff, and the larger Job Corps community. This program has long been a lifeline for people in Tucson offering education, training, and hope for the future. And then last but not least, I strongly condemn the horrific act of violence that occurred in Boulder over the weekend. My heart is with the victims, their families, and all those impacted by this senseless tragedy. I stand in solidarity with the people of Boulder as they grieve, seek justice, and begin the long road to healing. As communities across the country and right here in Tucson confront a deeply troubling rise of antisemitism, I want to be clear, hatred has no home here. There is no place for this kind of hate in our communities or in our country. We must come together to reject violence, reject hatred, and recommit ourselves to building communities grounded in safety, dignity, and respect for all. Thank you for giving me the time for that. Item 4.
City Managers Report, Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 163, dated June 3rd, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. One item for tonight. Just a reminder that now through August 31st, the City of Tucson is operating cooling centers in each ward to provide temporary designated areas for the public to utilize and escape the heat during peak hours. All cooling centers in the city of Tucson are located along Suntran bus routes, ensuring they remain accessible to keep vulnerable Tucson and safe from extreme heat. The six city-operated cooling centers are open daily from noon till 4:00 p.m., including holidays observed on Thursday, June 19th for Juneteenth, and Friday, July 4th for Independence Day. Those six locations are Donna Ligon Center at 2160 North Sixth Avenue, the El Pueblo Center at 101 West Irvington Road, Building 9, the Fred Archer Center at 1665 South La Choya Boulevard, Freedom Center at 5,000 East 29th Street, the Morris K. Udall Center at 7,200 East Tancaverdy Road, and finally, the Randolph Center at 200 South Avonon Way. And I'd also like to take a moment to thank my executive leadership team who joined me at our Community Safety Hub last week, where we participated with our Community Safety, Health, and Wellness Teams and Housing First Teams to assemble heat relief kits, emergency food kits, foot care kicks, kits, and feminine hygiene kits that are used for distribution to our most vulnerable citizens. So thank you to my ELT and thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Item 5.
Liquor license applications.
City Manager's Communication Number 164, dated June 3rd, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's agenda, we have five new license applications, one being a person-location transfer, one special event, and no agent change acquisition of controls. All applications are in compliance with city requirements, so an appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B-1 through 5 and 5C-1 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
So moved, Your Honor. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any against? Motion carries. Item 6.
Call to the audience.
Ms. Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, at this time, the public is allowed to address the Mayor and Council on any issue except for item schedules for a public hearing. Call to the audience will last for 30 minutes and speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. The green light will turn on when you begin speaking. It will turn yellow and beep when you have 30 seconds left of your allotted time. When your three minutes are up, the light will turn red and the timer will begin beeping. If that happens, please immediately conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Alrighty, we do have quite a lot of requests to speak. So if someone else has mentioned what you wanted to mention, just note it. And the quicker we move, the more opportunity for people to speak. So our first speaker is Shayna West. Shayna West. Can you use the taller mic?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright. My name is Shayna West. I am in Ward 1. I'm here to talk about an FLD that was just passed by the city. It's at the corner of Anklum and St. Mary's, directly at that stoplight right there. So it's the closest development to Tumamak Hill, closer than St. Mary's Hospital, closer than any of the parking lots that people are gonna be parking at. So I'm here representing myself, but I have been the primary communicator with my neighborhood, with the city on this issue. And we did want to mention that we're not opposed to development. Before we get into any of the concerns, we're not opposed to development on this plot. It's 19 acres. We know that there's a housing crisis in Tucson. It's widely an underutilized space. It's in a very desirable location, being close to Tumamak. But it's also in a very mature location. All of the neighborhoods there were built in the 60s. They're single-story, brick, flat, built-up, roofed homes. St. Mary's Hospital matches the architectural design. Pima Community College matches the architectural design. Pima Community College matches the architectural design. And we have been emailing the city for months, the zoning. For the last eight months, we've sent tens of emails to city zoning, and we have not gotten responses. We finally got a response when we threatened legal action. And from there, we didn't get any acknowledgement that they would review the general plan or the Tumamok area plan for architectural compatibility. So I were here. I'm here today to just bring it to your attention that this FLD is coming through. I don't think I've seen the final plot on your agenda yet, but it should be coming through soon. The proposed development is 19 acres, 12 of which is natural, undisturbed, open space. It is on a hill, so significant topography. It's in an existing, mature neighborhood. It is in the middle of town. It's the perfect plot for an FLD, per the purpose statement, right? But the only thing we're seeing is higher density. We're not seeing preservation of the natural space. It's going to be completely graded. It's gonna be flattened. And it's gonna be two-story, stucco, pitched roofs, homes. No driveways, no setbacks within the community. And the community open space is located on the farthest end of the 19-acre property. So we don't think that it matches the general plan. We don't think that it complies with the Tumamok area plan. We have not heard any comments from the city zoning and the review process talking about conformance to those plans, despite the fact that the general plan does say that new development should preserve and strengthen the distinctive physical character and identity of individual neighborhoods, that new development should protect the integrity of existing neighborhoods, and enhance overall function and visual quality of the street properties in the community, and protect established neighborhoods by supporting compatible development. This isn't just us, but every hiker of Tumamok.
Thank you, Ms. West.
Yeah, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Dennis Mullner? Dennis Mullner?
Mayor, City Council? Paul, thank you for recognizing the cats. You're the man. Wait till they come back with the World Series. I hope the city council gets behind them. Kevin, I called you about four weeks ago. You've never responded. I talked to your office manager, Shannon, but Kevin, say what you mean and mean what you say. Respond to my questions about the bus fares and the other concerns that I had. You said you would, and you didn't last week. Ms. Ulick, I talked to you about the parking spots downtown. We're gonna raise the rates and extend the parking time to pay, which is fine. But why are restaurants still having parking spots in front of their restaurants? There's nobody that's gonna be sitting in one of those spots when my F-250 goes by wanting exhaust, diesel exhaust on their filet mignon. We're looking for parking spots downtown. Yeah, seven, 10 of them may not make a difference, but let's have logic prevail. The other one is the To Go Bikes. We have Miss Santa Cruz in front of your office. They're in a parking spot on the street. We can't put them in a right-of-way or someplace else that makes sense, but why would we take up a parking spot when parking is already a premium? So that was, those are the couple of things I wanted to talk about. The other one was, it seems minor, but I echo the young lady. There's, we can talk about proclamations and say thank you and great job, but nobody responds. If we could have a dialogue where, you guys can't even talk to me. I don't know how that works. If I can speak to you, but we can't have a public dialogue, it just doesn't seem like it's holding anybody accountable. So I wanted to ask about a minor thing. Traffic accidents. When we have a traffic accident, you used to pick up the bumpers, the fenders, the debris in the street. We don't do that anymore. Causes another accident, a flat tire, damage to your vehicle. But I don't understand why we don't pick up the debris from a traffic accident. And... The bus stop, free fare. If you can afford to pay for the bus, pay for it. If you can't afford, get a reduced fare. And if you can't afford that, you're in a world of hurt. We need to do something else. But why can't we have people that can pay for the bus, pay for it? I know we have all our pet projects, but that's $9 million. It's not in the budget. Why? If you can afford to pay for the bus, pay for it. And if you can't, use the reduced fare like we used to have. The other thing is the crime at the bus stop. The young, the man that was murdered, the lady on the east side of town that was chopped with a hatchet. In the paper, Tim Stellar has, "A 13-year-old girl was assaulted. Another girl was raped." What are we gonna do about it? You sit back and just have the staff look and see, well, they're gonna come up with a plan? What have you guys come up with for a plan for safety at the bus stops? I welcome each and every one of you to meet me at the bus stop at Stone and Fort Lowell at 5:00. Let's ride the bus. You have my name and my phone number.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Robin McCardle? Robin McCardle?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Romero and City of Tucson council members. Great to see you, and welcome to Councilmember Perez. I'm here to express deep concern over the abrupt decision to discontinue senior congregate meal programs, as mentioned by our mayor. You shouldn't be surprised that I'm here. This is extremely upsetting. I want to tell you, members of the community, a little bit about this funding, and I know I only have three minutes, but this has been money through the Older Americans Act, which was established in 1965 through the federal government to provide nutrition services for older adults. For the past 40 years, these programs have been offered in City of Tucson facilities. For 25 of those years, I managed the RFPs and the agreements between the City of Tucson for these senior nutrition programs. I don't have to sell you on what a vital program this is. I don't have to sell you on the fact that, for many, this program, which provides 1/3 of the daily nutrition requirements for our elders, is the only meal that they get that day. I don't have to sell you on the fact that we already know that there is an epidemic from isolation that has been declared a health hazard. More, just as important as the nutrition aspect of this program, is the socialization aspect. The fact that this funding is going away, I'm here to tell you, I had this all written up, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm not buying it. I worked with the grant for too long. The Older Americans Act has not been cut. I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised if it will be, but it has not at this point. I don't understand why this program hasn't been taken through the end of the fiscal year. Makes no sense to me. I was reading it in the paper like many others were. I did get a little heads up from other senior advocates that were concerned about this. I have some questions that I know, I'm hoping, that as a provider of this program, you have every, every right? You should be asking some hard questions from Pima Council on aging. And I really would urge you to do that, and I would urge you to please, I'm asking you to add this to your agenda for public input, and for you to take the leadership role to identify how this has been allowed to get to this point. I'm hopeful that this is just the beginning of a conversation that should have begun months ago. What I want to say to you is WWMLD. What would Marion Lupu do? What would Fred Acosta do? Both of them would have been pretty upset about these announcements. Thank you. I think, I appreciate you all.
Thank you so much, Robin.
Mr. Manager, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman.
We work quite a bit with PCOA, so we'll take the lead on this. I'll get a memo in from my office, and we can agendize this item.
Alrighty, our next speaker is Chris Jocaris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Councilmember Lee, I'm one of yours, Ward Four. At the last meeting, I spoke briefly about TEP. I mistakenly said they made $249 million in profit in 2024. That was actually 2023. In 2024, they actually made $289 million in profit. So on the TEP municipalization question, I just want to point out that, despite my mistake, the $289 million is pulled directly from the residents, businesses, and other organizations in Tucson and delivered to a private utility company. So I think it's just, it's a fair question to ask, what are we getting for that money in return? So I'm not a professional at this. I work full-time. I'm a single parent. I don't have the time to go through every detail, but I've been starting to follow the council study sessions online when I can. You know, it's clear you're evaluating this issue, and we're coming up against this deadline to see if we're gonna have it on the ballot or not. The feasibility study you commissioned concluded that the municipalization is both financially and technically viable. It's projected that the city could own and operate the utility, reaching profitability within about seven years. That's a long-term investment plan, even if it takes way longer than seven years. Once that break-even point is reached, we can stop exporting hundreds of millions of dollars out of the community every year. We can use it here locally to stabilize rates, advance renewables, whatever it is that we wanna do. We don't have to decide what we're gonna do with it at the moment, but that money becomes usable for the City of Tucson residents, businesses, purposes, rather than as extracted profit for a company. We already have one major public utility that will run very well, Tucson Water. It's reliable, locally managed, and publicly accountable. That success shows that our city is capable of running a complex system with competence and integrity. Let's not say it would be easy. Renewing the franchise agreement is the simpler path. It avoids lawsuits and pushback from Fortis. The price of that simplicity is continued financial extraction, year after year, of money from Tucson's population. They're gonna get the $2.5 billion from us one way or another. It can just be $2.5 billion, and we're done, or $2.5 billion, and we keep sending it out to them after that. If we choose the harder path, the payoff could be somewhat transformative for Tucson. Again, we could lower bills, use it for other projects. This will take, I mean, this is not gonna be easy. It will take strong leadership. It will take competent professionals to get us through this, and it'll take the political will to act. As I understand, we have until July 1st to decide whether to place the franchise renewal on the November ballot. My humble suggestion is that we don't. If we're gonna do this, we need time to build more community support. Fortis will have far more money to spend, so we need time to build strong public support. To me, that means engaging with the public now, talking to activists and other people that are very passionate about this issue. Am I done? Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Really appreciate your interest. Alan Benz?
Good evening, members of mayor and council. Talking to you about fare-free transit tonight. An additional $6 a night and 64% occupancy rate to the hotel motel room tax would bring in $11.8 million plus or minus in revenue available to fund fare-free transit, paid by tourists, not city residents. Information provided by city staff to the Transit Advisory Committee showed the average fare box revenue from Suntran of $12.1 million plus minus during the years 2014, 2020. The average length of Tucson visitors' stay is approximately 10 days, but during the Jim Show, that grows to 27 days. A study for the St. Louis, Missouri Transit System by St. Louis University showed a 40 to 1 payback, I will repeat that, a 40 to 1 payback to the local economy for every dollar spent on fare-free transit. There isn't a financial professional in this town that wouldn't give their eye teeth to have that sort of a payback ratio for any and all of their clients. So anything else? That's it for tonight. Thank you very much for considering this.
Thank you. Shane Danstil? Shane Danstil?
My name is Shane. I live in Ward Three, and I've lived in Tucson my whole life. I'm writing to respectfully speak against the proposed 6.6 property tax increase. I participated in a recent election where over 70% of voters, including myself, said no to higher sales tax. This is a clear message from the public, yet the city wants to shift those costs onto property owners. We're told this hike is happening because it is all that is allowed, to quote Councilman Paul Cunningham. This doesn't sound like good planning. It feels like a quick money grab, and addressing the real problem isn't happening. Please think twice. We elected you to listen to the people and do what's best for the whole community. I urge you to respect the will of the voters and find a better solution. Do not unfairly burden, do not unfairly burden property owners. Thank you.
Is this respondable? Is that respondable? Because our...
That's up to the attorney.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Cunningham, an individual council member can respond to criticism that's offered during a call to the audience. So it needs to be directly responsive.
I just wanna make sure we understand that the property tax is going down. We have two property taxes, primary and secondary. They balance off each other, and the property tax is reduced from $148 per $100,000 assessed in 2014 to $99. This is the low. It's been since 2009. The property tax rate is going down. So I just wanna make sure I'm very clear about that.
Thank you. Alrighty, Liliana Bab, I believe is. Liliana Bab?
Hi, my name is Liliana Bab.
Liliana, can you point the mic to your closer to your mouth? Thank you.
I've been looking at assistance legally, Pima County Bar Office, State Bar Arizona, the Court Library, the Public Library, American Arbitration Association Online, Channel 4, NBC Investigation. I submitted a case with them. No response back. I looked for assistance at the clinics at the Law School of UA, Hispanic Homero Chamber, BBB, Mexican Consulate, Tucson Together, and nothing. No one has been helping me. So I've just been getting denied, denied, denied. So this is my last resource. I've been looking for help everywhere. There's bad people out there, and it's a nonprofit organization. They do a scam, and they stole my business. So back in 2009, 2010, the Daily Star newspaper investigated cross-country outreach, and they always rebrand, or like they put their new brand, and then now they're calling themselves Cross Country Tucson. But they used to be Cross Country Outreach, Cross Country Ministry, and now they're Cross Country Tucson. It's a food bank with shelters. They steal their social security checks, child support from food stamps benefits, donated toys for the kids, and they always take everything away from, you know, for the people. So on May 2025, the same nonprofit organization, they scammed me, and they took everything from me and my family. So I don't know where else to go, and I'm just looking for any help.
Mr. City Manager, can we connect Ms. Bab with maybe one of our Community Safety, Health, and Wellness team members that have a little bit more resources that they could possibly tap into?
Yes, Mayor, as long as we get the contact information from the clerk.
I think we have a number for Ms. Bab. I'll send this information your way. Thank you. Alrighty, Victoria DeVasto?
Hello, mayor and council. I have provided each of you with the current proposed STAR model, some visual guides, and basic programming. These are a work in progress, and I included a pen and paper to make feedback a bit easier. I look forward to reading your responses. Your input is important. We are excited for more meetings, discussions with agencies, other outreach workers, and you. STAR, serving together and rebuilding. A transitional, low-barrier, essential resource encampment is an opportunity for massive collaboration and partnership. We need all hands on deck, every player in homeless services right now. The STAR model is designed to fill a gap in service... The STAR model is designed to fill a gap in services while simultaneously bridging to existing resources. With a similar low-barrier structure to stationate and Wildcat Inn, STAR stands out in its rapid initiation and mobility. This is something we can implement this summer and replicate anywhere. We have done a lot of studying, and with Tucson's size and politics in mind, we've pulled five programs from cities around the country that have models we believe can be relevant here. We have compiled a book of evidence and statistics from these programs, and we have these available to send at your request. Research has shown there is a great benefit and success in encampment settings with a population of 30 or less. The concept of growth here is replication, not more people per camp. STAR could exist in every ward within one year. A 25-person capacity is ideal. The initial demographic for pilot is women and gender nonconforming young adults with a larger age radius than other young adult programs, 18 to 30 years old. On-site provisions would include a large resource tent, bathroom access, potable water, safe sleep tents, lighting, a storage chest, and basic cooling equipment. Each day, an agency provider or predetermined service will be present onsite. Behavioral health, medical, employment, life skills, substance use, education, and harm reduction, plus more. Each major agency involved will have a small team or pair of outreach workers present onsite on their assigned day to offer service. The additional support will also lessen the burden of needing additional staffing for the city. The large resource tent can be utilized as an office and meeting space for all staff and rotating services. This tent can also double as a cooling center for participants during the day. STAR can be a new stop for shower trucks, the homeless work program, the county mobile clinic, and more. Within each participant's first week, they enroll in an agency of their choice. These agencies will be onsite and coming to them. I have had some initial meetings, however, I am requesting further guidance and direction. I am asking for additional meetings with the mayor and city manager regarding budget, location, and realistic next steps. In terms of annual cost, we have evidence from multiple sources that operation falls around $1,000 to $200,000 per year. There is so much room for growth, flexibility, creativity, and community building here. Let's partner with environmental groups. Let's partner with mutual aid groups. Let's partner with neighbors who want to see progress and alternatives. Let's come together. Thank you for your consideration, and I look forward to next steps.
Thank you, Ms. DeVasto. Really appreciate you coming to us with a possible solution. Really appreciate you. All righty. Our next speaker is Jesse Lugo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and city staff. My name is Jesse Lugo. I'm here to discuss the proposed 12th Avenue Stormwater, Greenwater Stormwater Infrastructure. On Wednesday, excuse me, on Wednesday, May 21st, I met with Councilmember Perez, along with a staff member, to review the items that, city clerk will give you a copy of it, on the, I met with merchants on 12th Avenue on May the 10th, which I had 32 merchant owners actually sign a petition that actually opposed the project. But along, I was also asked by people that commute on 12th Avenue from Valencia to Ajo, where, as you may recall, where the city in the past put a barrier between the medium and the street itself. What's being proposed now is to put a concrete barrier with trees on 12th Avenue. On behalf of the merchants and everybody that commutes on 12th Avenue, they oppose this project, and what they're asking is that this be placed as an agenda item, so this way the public can have more input on this project, because they want to make sure they get suspended until the public is heard. So we ask that for mayor and council to consider to place it as an agenda item in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Susan Van Buren?
Good evening, mayor and the council. My name is Susan Van Bieber. I'm a retired Tucsoner. I bring up two concerns. One is, where is the homeless supposed to go to the bathroom? You can't go inside, and you can't go outside without getting arrested. And the other issue is the drug problem. We have drug problems of people doing their business in front of businesses and the bus stations, and there's a lot of businesspeople that ride the buses to back and forth to work. They don't need to see that, and we're all human. That's my issues. That's my concerns. I just don't know, where is the homeless supposed to go to the restroom? Because they have the signs on the, you know, in the buildings, you know, you got to buy something, and you know, all the homeless is not, you know, rich, and you can't go outside without getting arrested. That's, no, that's not going to happen. And not all homeless people are druggies and drunks. I mean, there are some decent people, but we just don't know where to go to the bathroom, I mean, restroom, especially after everything's closed up. You know? And the drug issues, you know, the bus stops, you know, you got people, like I say, you got people doing their business at the bus stations, waiting for the bus to go home after work or something, and they got to see that or put it with that. That's uncalled for. We're all human beings. That's what, that's my only two concerns are right now. It's not right. And thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And this will be our last speaker, Stephen, I think it's Brendon? Stephen? Brendon?
Brigham.
Brigham.
Just like the university.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time, Mayor Romero, council members. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Stephen Brigham, former chair of the city's Architectural Approval Board many years ago, longtime planner and architect for the University of Arizona, UMC, and Banner Health. I'm here to talk about Plan Tucson 2025, and I apologize, I'm going to beat the clock. And I know you want to bring this to closure, but there's an important issue that I think you need to consider. Aesthetics are important to all of us, all of you, and certainly for our planning future. We have 6 million annual visitors who come for many reasons, including to bask in the beauty of our region. We also have more than a half million of residents, many who volunteer long hours to make their neighborhoods attractive. During my 30-year planning career, whether talking with visitors, residents, business owners, political leaders, a common thread is that we all care about the aesthetics of our community. Other cities have long recognized that aesthetics help their economies and enhance their neighborhoods. However, Plan Tucson really has a responsibility to include aesthetics at least somewhere among the many goals and values and policies. The word aesthetic only shows up two times in the document, in the appendix and elsewhere under neighborhoods related to neighborhood HOAs that enforce aesthetics. Plan Tucson document must reflect our community aesthetic passion with greater support and planning leadership. For example, we rightly celebrate the mayor's 1 Million Trees Initiative, which will help enhance communities all over Tucson. Clock is going down. We have a flourishing university that places a high value on architecture and landscape planning. We have amazing botanical gardens and museums that showcase Tucson's natural splendor, and we have neighborhoods with ambitious volunteers working tirelessly to improve their streetscapes. Plan Tucson needs to support our neighborhood volunteers more directly through a clear policy that provides civic commitment to improve rights-of-way and enhance streetscapes. It's an opportunity that should not be missed in this significant document. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. It's good to see you.
Thank you, sir. And that was our last speaker. Thank you all so much for participating. Really appreciate it. We have 30 minutes assigned to call to the audience, sir, and we have more speakers that want to speak than we have time. I appreciate it. We are more than happy to receive your emails and calls to our offices to express your concerns. Thank you all. We move on to item 7. Consent agenda items A through J. Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda item, please.
Consent agenda A is approval of minutes. B is the final plat for Park Milton lots 1 through 4. C is the final plat for the stones lots 1 through 4. D is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County and the City of Tucson, Lee Stormit Data Center Space and Pima County Emergency Communications Operations Center for Information Technology Disaster Recovery. E is an intergovernmental agreement with the Church of St. Michael and All Angels for Use of Harold Bell Wright Park. This item will be considered separately. F is the lease agreement with Daniel Valenzuela, DBA Gyris Studios LLC to occupy 1559 rentable square feet at 143 North Stone Avenue, RP 2200, Real Estate Services Number 2025-222. G is a subrecipient agreement to fulfill continuum of care grants. H is a subrecipient agreement to fulfill choice neighborhood grants. I is a vacation and sale of portions of city-owned right-of-way La Choya Boulevard and Fort Low Road near the I-10 Prince Interchange, RES 2022-097. And J is a resolution, Stage 2 Fire Restrictions and Declaration of Fire Emergency in the City of Tucson.
May I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move to approve the matters on the consent agenda.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? I believe we need to go to roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Just to make it clear, we are approving the matters on the consent agenda A through J with the exception of 7E. That will be considered separately. I'll go to roll call. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0, and then we're considering one separately.
Correct.
All righty. Councilmember Cunningham?
Your Honor, I just wanted to acknowledge some of the people that worked on this. This was not an easy task. You'd think it was, would be pretty cut and dry, but Harold Bell Wright Park has been kind of shared in a mutual agreement between the St. Michael's, St. Michael's Parents and St. Michael's Parish Church and the neighborhood, and they, it's not a perfect symbiotic relationship, but everybody tried, and I wanted just to acknowledge Chris Avery from the city attorney's office, Pat Burns from my office, and actually Ricky Mensching, who's a longtime neighbor in Harold Bell Wright, and the three of them kind of were able to broker this and bring a bunch of people together who, at one point, were not speaking to each other, and a real negative was made out of a positive. So I just wanted to thank everybody, and with that, I'm going to move the item.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Do we have to go to roll call?
Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Romero?
Aye. Item passes 7-0. We move on to item 8.
Public hearing, hearing and passing on any written objections to the fiscal year 2026 assessments on the property within the downtown Tucson Enhanced Municipal Services Improvement District, the bid, and authorizing and approving the assessments.
City manager's communication number 172 dated June 3rd is received into and made part of the record. This is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing to take formal action to levy special assessments within the bid. Staff recommends approval of the resolution for fiscal year ending June 30, 2026. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether you live in the City of Tucson whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Do we have any speakers right now?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. And I see Kevin. Do we have a presentation by city staff?
No presentation, only brief remarks this evening.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The item before you this evening is the required public hearing to allow comment on the downtown Tucson Enhanced Municipal Services Improvement District, or the bid, and to levy assessments on properties within the bid for fiscal year 26. This evening, we're joined by Crystal Moore, who since November of 2024 has served as president and CEO of the Downtown Tucson Partnership. She has prepared brief remarks. Crystal and I will be happy to take any questions from the mayor and council this evening as well. Thank you.
Crystal? Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, Mayor Romero, council members, and city staff. Thank you for your consideration and approval of our annual budget and work plan last month. Our efforts would greatly diminish without your support. In anticipation of this public hearing, we sent all 384 bid property owners a postcard and email to link our 24-page impact report highlighting over 64,000 combined green and safe responses over the last 11 months. In addition to the impact report, we followed up directly with last year's concerned property owner sharing detailed service logs and marketing examples, reinforcing our commitment to transparency and responsiveness. Together Tucson is a new initiative launched with Rio Nuevo and downtown nighttime venues to promote safer spaces using ID scanners and real-time communication. When someone is removed or banned for violating a policy, all participating venues are immediately notified. Nighttime guests have responded positively to these added safety measures. Through this initiative, our partnership with Tucson Police Department has strengthened. Weekly meetings now align scheduling between off-duty officers funded by Rio Nuevo, district officers, and DTP safe ambassadors. Deployment is based on peak demand. Data provided by TPD shows that in just six weeks of these efforts, criminal incidents have started to drop when compared to last year, and proactive arrests are on the rise. We expect these successes to continue, to trend in the right direction with sustained collaboration. We're proud to support the Tucson 250 Plus Celebration. We assisted Rio Nuevo in identifying the mural locations that are now in production, and we are developing a merchant toolkit to link the efforts of the event sponsors to street-level operators for full community engagement. We're outperforming peer cities such as Denver and Tempe in digital engagement. 79 email campaigns, 12 million digital impressions to over 156,000 followers, including 81,500 Instagram followers alone. Our marketing effort is funded by Rio Nuevo. Business growth is strong, with 28 new businesses opening in the bid this fiscal year, a clear vote of confidence in downtown's future. Our Six Month Desert Nights Downtown Lights campaign is gaining traction, offering a premier sponsorship opportunity to eliminate over 100 trees downtown, a $76,000 investment. Last year's campaign was supported by TEP, the City of Tucson, Pima County, and Rio Nuevo. We partnered with Pima County to install umbrellas and bistro tables in El Presidio Park, creating shaded, accessible spaces for people to gather and enjoy downtown. Finally, our Downtown Tucson for Everyone Grant Program, in partnership with HSL Properties, awarded $20,000 to recipients for events and programs for underserved communities. In short, downtown Tucson is cleaner, safer, and more vibrant than ever, thanks to you and our funding partners. Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Really appreciate you being here. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries. What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor, I, I move that we pass and adopt Resolution Two Three Nine Three Eight.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call. Oh, go ahead, read the resolution.
Resolution Number Two Three Nine Three Eight relating to downtown Tucson Enhanced Municipal Services Improved District, the bid, hearing and passing on objections to assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-six and adopting assessments on property within the bid.
Alrighty, let's go to roll call.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mick Sulek.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye. Resolution Two Three Nine Three Eight passes by a vote of seven-zero. Item nine.
Public hearing fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget as tentatively adopted on May twenty twenty twenty-five and increased to property tax levy.
City Manager's Communication Number One Seventy-five, dated June third, is received into and made part of the record. This is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing to discuss fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget as tentatively adopted on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, and the truth in taxation property taxes increases. This is a public hearing. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether you live in the city of Tucson, and whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker.
Do we have any people signed up to speak?
No, Your Honor.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this issue?
Your Honor, Suzanne Puticard.
Alrighty, Suz- Suz- Suzanne? Come, come on up. Anyone else after Suzanne wishing to be heard on the budget? Okay. Suzanne?
I'm Suzanne Schaefer. I'm here on behalf of Carissa Sip, who is Ward Six resident, who's been actually trying to get scheduled to come in here. And she wanted this to be presented before the final budget, and so asked me to read it. So again, this is Carissa Sip. First, my apologies for being unable to attend the public hearing tonight, and I appreciate the ability to have another read this in my absence. As a working mom of two young girls, I would like to make sure, to make a few comments about the progress forward and the discussion tonight. The budget for this city is not easy or trivial, given the constraints the state has placed on cities, towns, and Arizona to have local control and revenue capture increases as seen fit. This being said, I would like to ask the city and its residents not to put the burden of the budget on the backs of the working people. I hear about the city buses and Route Five discontinuation with possible on-demand ride access, yet no details. I hear how adding cost to ride the bus would prevent crime. First, let me address the number five bus and the lack of clear understanding by whoever chose this route for elimination. This route serves the children at several schools. There is no clear alternative, and with the forever ongoing construction at Grant, there is absolutely no safe bus stop for many kids going to school but Route Five. The on-demand offering is basically Uber and a clear hurdle for disabled and disadvantaged folks. This is such a new offering, even in the public meetings, not one representative could clearly talk to the potential cost. In essence, cutting Route Five would most likely not be cost-effective in the long run. I ask for greater transparency in this process and discussions with schools and the families impacted. While the forums for discussion were great, they were at times not on the route, at times hard for working families and students to make, and I don't believe I saw one that would have been distributed to attendees of productions at the Burger Center at the School of the Deaf and Blind. Route Five goes there, and yet there was little awareness to the community I know about the discontinuation. We ride consistently this route in the summer, winter, and fall with my four children, and the ask of us now is to add almost an hour to my time to get there and/or call on-demand to pick us up from the final destination a close bus route can achieve. I am beyond frustrated at this sleight of hand. Now, before my time is up, let me address the fare fee that will supposedly somehow stop disruptions on the bus. We all know Tucson drivers are nuts, road rage can take place, and speeding, running reds, DUI driving, and racing all occur. There is a cost to that, and yet people still do this. People have privilege that can afford cars, reckless driving, and points on their license, and they put pedestrians, bikers, and other drivers at risk. So how does this apply to fares, you ask? People can still make disruptions with or without cost added, but there is no way someone who is already causing problems is going to pay a fare, but they will still get on the bus and fight folks getting ready to board and the driver when asked to pay. They will cause delays for people trying to get to work and potentially more violence or even missed buses while the bus driver decides to move on to avoid the non-paying rider. Nothing will change with added costs, but the working folk will be more burdened with both headaches, late work arrivals, late kid pickups, and potential violence in trying to avoid bus fares. I want to make sure when I am riding the bus with my family and I are safe and can get somewhere in time without missing buses. You miss a bus in Tucson, you are not getting home anytime soon, especially on the weekends. And if you are riding the bus in Tucson, you are most likely someone who desperately needs it and cannot be burdened either by cost, time, or access to the pass that could allocate lower fares or free fares. Carissa Sip.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any others wanting to speak and be heard on this item? If you'd like to come up? And again, please come forward and state your name, whether you live in the city, and whom you are representing.
Mayor and council. It's me again. I know Nikki, I know Anna, I know Tim. That's my city manager. My name is Kevin, Kevin Holder. I live in the city of, city of Tucson. I also work for the wonderful city of Tucson. I just represent myself. I like my job. One can say I, I, I love my job. I really do. Tim, I'm, I'm going to quote you right here. I like this quote, and this, you, you did this back in April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. It was under the study session. It says, you, you say, "I am recommending that we take a very strong look at all our memberships and associations that, as a city, we are members of, and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars." I like that quote. I don't know why, but I, I mean, I really like the way that you put that across. I just hope I'm not one of those memberships, you know, or one of those associates, like, hey. So, so anyhow, I miss the team focus with Tim. I don't get to watch that. I sure hope that someday I can do that, but I'm, I'm a field worker, so I'm always busy, you know? I, I wish to, you know, property taxes up, down. They say it's actually going down. I guess we'll see, we'll see what happens. Board of Supervisors were getting ready to adopt something else. I, I think it was Matt, Matt Heinz was, was going to do, do something. I was reading up on that. I didn't get, they didn't get a chance to finish, but I wish to have a meeting, either with you, Tim, or even with Anna, or, or my director, Sam, or even my, my administrator, Sean. I wish we had face-to-face in-person meetings like we used to have to, like we used to in the past, but, but we don't. You know, everything's just kind of like, it's just like up in the air. And it's, it's kind of crazy at work, you know? Again, so basically, the Talkaround Department, and even though I'm representing myself, I, I, I hear it, and basically, it's, everybody's wondering, why am I doing my own review? You know, it's like, my own review? That don't make sense. And they're all saying, all for one-point-five percent? So, last time I was up here, I talked about the merits. Merits went away in two thousand and six. So next year, that's twenty years. Twenty years without a merit. And I like my job, and for whatever reason, I ha- I have hope in the city. For whatever reason, I keep thinking, wow, you know, someday the city's going to come through. But it's almost like, you know, people are getting paid just as, you know, twenty-five bucks an hour, and it took me forever just to get there. And, and now I feel like, you know, I'm just making a few dollars more than that, but I've been there for twenty-eight years. So the, they, you know, twenty years, no merits. I don't know if there's any plans of, of, of bringing them back. I don't know, because we don't have meetings about that, you know? And, and I keep missing the, the team focus with Tim, so I don't, I, I'm not quite sure. But I would like to schedule a meeting with them. But I, and again, like I said, I just did my review for my own self. I've never, ever had to do that. And, and so my, my final thing here is, you know, I, I, I've held my CDL. I have my CDL license. I have a CDL Class A with Tinker, you know, with Tinker endorsement. And I've held that for the past twenty-four of my twenty-eight years working for the city. And the city always said, hey, your license is your job, your license is your job. I said, all right, all right, keep yourself clean, do this, do that. And now, you know, I bring up CDL drivers, and boy, they're not just making no twenty-eight dollars an hour, you know, they're, they're making some good money. And, and I'm like, well, wha- wha- what is that? So I just hope for a proper pay increase, and I think I'm more, I, I think I'm worth more than just one-point-five percent, you know, to, to, to me and to a lot of the people that I talk to. Again, I'm not representing them, but I'm just saying that I hear it. But I think I'm worth more than that. Hopefully, I can get a better chance to talk with you, Tim, or with you, Anna. Nikki, I like talking with you. Paul, you're my, you're my ward rep, though. Hopefully, I can get a chance to talk to you. But thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Mr. Boulder, and I would encourage Mr. Tamir that management in Mr. Boulder's department reach out to him to explain all of the questions that he might have regarding his pay and his self-evaluation and what follows. What, what are the next steps? Thank you. Councilwoman.
Can I add one more point, too? I think it's really powerful what he mentioned about so many of our employees are out in the field, and so how do we communicate these important changes to them when they don't always have the ability to listen live, let alone listen at all because of the, the technology that may not be available? So I think that's a really important takeaway that I got to.
And I know that you record your team talks with Tim. Am I saying it correctly?
Yes, Mayor. Team focus with Tim is recorded.
We should change it to team talks with team, Tim.
It's team, it's now team talk with Tim. It, it's recorded, and, but that's still a, a barrier if you're, if you're in the field. And I, I'll say, we actually have a, a team focus with Tim for all employees, and then a team focus with Tim monthly series that's focused on supervisors, because we know it's very difficult to have a, I mean, we'll, we'll set up a meeting, we'll talk, and, and you were at our employee town hall, so I know you're active, and, and we, we interact, but you're, you're, you're not most of our employees, right? Most of them.
Yeah, you know, I mean.
Yep. That's it? But the, the, the ability to do some in-person town halls, I think, is something, you know, we'll certainly definitely look at. I, I, I'll encourage Director Credejo to make sure he's doing some in-person activities. And the, one of the reasons we're focused so much on the supervisors is they're our communicators in the field with all of our folks. And so we've recognized that for years. That's something we've under-invested in, so that's why we have this laser-like focus on, on our supervisor cadre this next year. So, points very well taken and, and noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Uh, Councilmember Cunningham?
Look, if you're my constituent, I'll, I'll happily extend hours. I can meet with you off, off of regular work hours. Just make the appointment. My door's pretty open. I'm, I'm pretty accessible, so I got no problem meeting up with you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? If none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Motion carries. This public hearing is closed. At this time, we will recess the regular meeting and convene a special meeting for the purpose of adopting fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. Ms. Clerk?
We're going to go into roll call. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Mick Sulek. Mayor Romero.
Here. Item two.
Special meeting of the mayor and council required by ARS Section Forty-two dash one-seven-one-oh-five-A, adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget.
City Manager's Communication Number One Seven Nine, dated June third, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution Two Three Nine Three Four by number and title only.
Resolution Number Two Three Nine Three Four relating to finance. Finally, to by the city of Tucson for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, declaring that together said expenditures shall constitute the budget of the city of Tucson for such fiscal year, and declaring that the five-year capital improvement plan has been approved with the first year of the CIP being adopted as part of the aforementioned budget.
What is the council's pleasure?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, before there's a motion to approve the resolution, if you could just first do the motion with respect to the funding for the MEC individually, Councilmember Perez will not vote on that item, and then everybody can vote together on the budget resolution.
Alrighty, so there, may I get a motion to approve the MEC budget, please?
So moved.
So moved, Your Honor.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Perez. Mick Sulek.
Go ahead.
Mick Sulek. Mayor Romero.
Aye. Item passes six-zero. And may I get a motion to pass and adopt Resolution Two Three Nine Three Four?
So moved, Your Honor. I move that we pass and adopt Resolution Two Three Nine Three Four.
Second.
There is the motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Couple things about the budget. I just want to let people know that in two thousand and sixteen, per a hundred thousand dollars, the property tax rate for a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value was a hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And it's fluctuated over time, but always over a hundred dollars for quite a while. This year, that total rate will be ninety-nine dollars. It has gone down from one sixty to under a hundred over the last nine to ten years. And I just think that's really important to pointing out, because I got emails this week from people asking why we were raising our property taxes when we have lowered them nine years in a row. And so I just want to make sure that on the city end, we're doing that. The other thing I want to make sure to reiterate is that the man who just spoke about being worth one-point-five percent, he is absolutely right. He absolutely is, and we have a lot of people that are. And that's why, as, when I talked about the compensation plan earlier tonight, I hope that we are able to put some type of adjustment in January first, if cash is available. But that's, I think everybody's working on that, and I think people need to know that we're working on that, especially our employees and our citizens about the property tax. So with that, I support our budget. This is a great job, Tim. Congratulations. Is this your first budget officially or second? Number one, kind of an A-plus. Remarkable. All right, that's it.
Any others? Hearing none, we need to go to roll call.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Dahl.
Aye.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Mick Sulek. Mayor Romero.
Aye. Resolution Two Three Nine Three Four passes by a vote of seven-zero. The special meeting is adjourned. At this time, we will reconvene our regular meeting. Well done. Alrighty, so we move on to item ten.
Item ten, Tucson Code Adoption of Compensation Plan for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Six, Annual Compensation Plan.
City Manager's Communication, Communication Number One Seven Six, dated June third, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance One Two One Seven Three by number and title only.
Ordinance Number One Two One Seven Three relating to Compensation Plan, Tucson Code, Chapter Ten, Civil Service, Human Resource, Article Two, Compensation Plan, Section Ten dash thirty-one, adopting salary Section ten dash thirty-one, adopting salary schedules for fiscal year 2026, implementing Section ten dash thirty-one, ratifying, reaffirming, and reenacting Sections ten dash thirty-one-eight, ten dash thirty-one-nine, ten dash thirty-three, ten dash thirty-three-point-one, ten dash thirty-four, ten dash thirty-four-point-one, ten dash thirty-four-point-two, ten dash thirty-four-point-three, ten dash thirty-four-point-four, ten dash thirty-four-point-five, ten dash thirty-five, ten dash forty-one, ten dash forty-seven, ten dash forty-eight, ten dash forty-nine, ten dash fifty-two, ten dash fifty-three, ten dash fifty-three-point-one, ten dash fifty-three-point-two, ten dash fifty-three-point-three, ten dash fifty-three-point-five, ten dash fifty-three-point-seven, ten dash fifty-three-point-eight, and ten dash fifty-three-point-nine, amending Section ten dash thirty-one-seven, providing percentages for calculation of compensation from salary schedules for employees in specified assignment positions, all as part of implementation of the annual compensation plan for fiscal year 2026 and declaring an emergency.
Uh, before we go to, um, make the motion to pass and adopt ordinance one-two-one-seven-three, does the staff have any presentations or any additions?
Honorable Mayor, members of council, no, uh, presentations or comments other than, I'm gonna read into the record the change that was referenced by the city manager um, during the study session with respect to Schedule A, which is the schedule for elected and unclassified, uh, employees and includes the magistrates. Uh, and so this will capture the adjustments that will occur, um, uh, in August. Um, but we want the, a comp plan schedule to be consistent with that adjustment when it happens. So, um, on that schedule, uh, the, uh, item for city magistrate, hourly rate will be corrected to read seventy-six-point-eight-one-three-zero-five-three dollars. The annual rate will be one, uh, with an effective date of August sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. For presiding magistrate, the hourly rate will be eighty-four-point-four-nine-four-three-five-eight. The annual rate will be one-seventy-five, seven-forty-eight-point-twenty-seven. Again, uh, August sixteen, uh, effective date. Then finally, for the pro tem magistrates, the hourly will be sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents. The annual rate will be hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents, same effective date. Thank you.
That we need to put into the record. Now, may I, um, get a motion, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to pass and adopt ordinance number one-two-one-seven-three.
There is a motion?
Seconded.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, let's go to roll call. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham? Mr. Dahl? Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mick Sulek? Mayor Romero?
Aye, ordinance one-two-one-seven-three passes by a vote of seven-zero.
Item eleven?
Adoption of Development Impact Fee Program Rate.
City manager, communication number one-seven-seven dated June third is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance one-two-one-six-nine by number and title only.
Ordinance number one-two-one-six-nine relating to development impact fees, adopting the fee report and development impact fee rates and schedules for fire, police, street, and parks and recreational facilities, amending Tucson Code Division four, Development Impact Fee Schedules and Effective Dates, Sections twenty-three-eight dash ninety and twenty-three-eight dash ninety-one, and setting an effective date.
Have, will staff have a presentation on this item? No? Okay, no reading into the record anything? Okay. Alrighty. What is council's pleasure on this item?
Mayor, I move to pass and adopt ordinance one-two-one-six-nine.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion? Councilmember Cunningham and then councilmembers, um, Ulick.
There's no way we're gonna have an impact fee vote without me having discussion. Impact fees are one of the topics that I learned a lot about, about nine to ten years ago when we started work on Jesse Owens Park. And as you delve into them, it gets com- more, more and more complicated. Um, I'm okay with the increase that we're doing. I think we should offer the opportunity, though, to adopt a new category at some point. I think we can't do it right now, we're not gonna do it at the table, this is, this is just for discussion. And earlier this year, we talked about asset management. Specifically in parks is where this is needed. Right now, if you really look at parks, if you look at the public safety and, and street, um, transportation impact fees, they're probably where they need to be. It does, we can't really get into the woods, uh, into the weeds saying, oh, hey, we need to put a sidewalk here or whatever with impact fees. The, the engineers do the project pretty well, but with parks, it's an asset, it's an asset management piece because we're limited to what we can put in, what we can do with CIP money. Whereas if we're using the impact fees for parks, we, we have an opportunity for asset management. And if we can work with stakeholders and actually offer them a carrot, too, where they actually can reduce maybe their overall cost per unit. The fee is there, where the stakeholders can reduce their total cost and fees. They pay their print pack fee, they pay their construction sales tax same rate, we don't mess with them. And then we just create a third kind of, there's issues that we have to negotiate.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Ulick.
So, um, I, I did want to appreciate the stakeholders, including the servants, other members that did offer some, not just, um, commentary, uh, but really detailed data, um, related to the study that, that was conducted. And, um, in reviewing that, I think, Mark, and, maybe I can just ask a couple of questions. Sorry to interrupt you on this spot, but I, I, I just wanna make sure I'm reading the report correctly, um, so that we can respond to some of the questions. I, 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 um, appreciate that we're phasing in the impact fees, right? I think that was really a tough one to respond to, because, um, a significant jump in costs. And so we are phasing these in over years one, uh, and two, starting at, um, uh, eighty percent, I think, and then going to ninety percent, two-hundred percent, doesn't it? I think that's a significant indication, I really recognize it, that we don't want to hurt investment or slow investment, yet we need to cover our infrastructure costs. In Salva's letter, there was a chart that really stood out to me. I just wanted to ask a question about it, and sorry to, uh, I'll, I'll explain what I think it shows. Tom, if I'm wrong. But there was a sampling of different projects and the cost, the recent cost of a project and the cost that was noted in the report. Just the report and those, those estimated costs, is that based on the five-year period that, that these impact fees are covering? In other words, we're projecting what that average cost of a project would be during the full five-year period? Um, it averaged over five, each of the five years. That's how I'm understanding that. Because if you look at it, it looks like it's like a huge increase. But if you think about what these will cost over three years, one-three, one-two, three-four-five, I can see where the cost of projects will increase that.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, I wanna jump in for a minute. I think we should take a quick break to see if we can drop this out in the mic.
Oh.
So that we have, uh, an accurate record of the consequences. Again, I just will be able to still see.
They just came back. No.
Are they? Hello? Hello? Yeah. It needs,
I don't think so.
The mic, the mic system needs to be rebooted, I'm sorry. But, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we'll take a little break. Ulick had just asked a question and, um, test? Okay. Thank you.
Good after, uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, Larry Hamley, Director of Parks and Recreation. So to answer the question, what, which, um, from what I understand, is the difference in the number, is it trying to reflect estimated inflation? In our interpretation of the table, that as it was provided, and when we look at the projects, um, I wanna provide the reference that impact fees are about us expanding recreational assets within a park, right? So it's not just the individual cost of the actual asset, it's the design, utility connections, the clearing and grading of the land, and setting everything up that's affiliated with the project. So when you look at the entire cost of the project, that's the number that we provided, um, as a reference for the development of the impact fees and future investment. And when we look at the cost or the numbers that were provided back in the letter, we can attribute those directly to the actual improvement, but doesn't seem to give the credit to all the hard, some of the hard and soft costs that are also affiliated with that investment.
Okay. So thank, I don't know if that helps. Thank you so much, that's very clarifying, and we can always follow up. So, um, in, in other words, I think, because those numbers really jumped out, I think, at everybody. And we wanna make sure to get information out that's apples to apples in terms of complete cost of project versus, for example, just the playground equipment or a, a segment of the total cost of the project. So that's really helpful. Um, so, um, given that and the, the plan to phase in, I know there are additional requests, and there always are, understandably, advocacy to delay implementation until January, et cetera. But I do think we, we're, we've done the best we can, and I wanna thank the staff in, um, especially in recommending the phase-in, to acknowledge that we don't wanna hit the, the development community, um, abruptly with very high increases, and those will be phased in over three years. So with that, I'm ready to move that we pass and adopt Resolution one-two, ordinance number one-two-one-six-nine.
There is a motion? Yeah, a second? Motion in a second, any further discussion? That's okay, we could do it twice. Um, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, I believe we need to go to roll call. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye, ordinance one-two-one-six-nine passes by a vote of seven-zero.
Item twelve?
Adoption of the twenty-twenty-three National Electric Code and twenty-twenty-four International Building Codes.
City manager's communication number one-seven-eight dated June third is received and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance one-two-one-seven-one by number and title only.
Ordinance number one-two-one-seven-one relating to built-in, Buildings, Electricity, Plumbing, and Mechanical Code, amending the Tucson Code, Chapter six, Buildings, Electricity, Plumbing, and Mechanical Code by amending Article three, Building, Section six dash thirty-four, Building Code adopted by adopting the International Building Code twenty-twenty-four addition with local amendments. Section six dash thirty-eight, residential code, residential code adopted by adopting the International Residential Code twenty-twenty-four addition with local amendments. Section six dash sixty-six, existing building code adopted by adopting the International Existing Building Code twenty-twenty-four addition with local amendments. Article four, Electricity, Section six dash eighty-four, Electrical Code adopted by adopting the twenty-twenty-three National Electrical Code with local amendments. Article five, Plumbing Code, Section six dash one-twenty-four, Plumbing Code adopted by adopting the International Plumbing Code twenty-twenty-four addition with local amendments. Article six, Mechanical Code, Section six dash one-sixty-four, Mechanical Code adopted by adopting the International Mechanical Code twenty-twenty-four addition with local amendments. Section six dash one-sixty-seven, Fuel-Gas Code adopted by adopting the Article nine, Swimming-Pool and Spa Code, Section six dash one-ninety-one, Swimming-Pool and Spa Code adopted by adopting the International Swimming-Pool and Spa Code twenty-twenty-four addition with local amendments, establishing penalties and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Mayor and Mayor, I motion to adopt ordinance, uh, one-two-one-seven-one.
There is a motion?
Second his motion.
There is a motion in a second, any further discussion, Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just happened to have a conversation with someone in the development industry last week who expressed that there was potentially a twenty percent increase in housing costs. Should we adopt these new, um, building codes, international building codes? So Corin, I was wondering if we had done that analysis to understand the impacts of us adopting the international building codes, because I think none of us want to make housing more expensive. So could we just get a, a sense of if that's been looked at?
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, this question came up early on in the discussion, and the potential increase in cost that people are concerned about is if we were to be adopting, uh, the energy code. This is not subject to tonight's discussion or adoption of the electric code and the building code. So we have done that analysis. These codes are not anticipated to significantly increase costs on, on development, uh, and we are not bringing the energy code for action tonight.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any others? Alrighty. Hearing none, we will go to roll call. Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Mick Sulek? Mayor Romero?
Aye, ordinance one-two-one-seven-one passes by a vote of seven-zero. Item thirteen? City of Tucson's General Plan, Plan Tucson twenty-twenty-five, approving Plan Tucson twenty-twenty-five and directing it to be submitted to Tucson's voters for ratification.
City manager's communication number one-eight-zero dated June third is received and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution two-three-nine-four-zero and ordinance one-two-one-seven-two by number and title only.
Resolution number two-three-nine-four-zero relating to planning and zoning, adopting Plan Tucson twenty-twenty-five and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number one-two-one-seven-two relating to elections pursuant to ARS Section nine dash four-six-one-point-oh-six and Chapter, um, twenty of the Tucson Code, calling a special election to be held on November four, twenty-twenty-five for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the city of Tucson, Arizona, as a referred measure, a question regarding the ratification of the City of Tucson General Plan for land use within the city known as Plan Tucson twenty-twenty-five and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
I move that we-
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, this is the night, this is the night for amendments to read into the record. We had some discussion with respect to the general plan and one additional, um, sentence that had been the subject of discussion, uh, back and forth relating to the CLS. I, if you've got it handy, otherwise I can pull it up. Corin's got it handy.
So we will read into the record an additional sentence that we wanna add. Okay. Go ahead.
This is the suggested, uh, revised Land Use Policy twenty-three that has been recommended by staff. That policy is to apply the Conservation Land System map and guidelines in a flexible manner during entitlement reviews to promote residential and commercial development while protecting natural resources.
So that will be added into the record. Let's say that, so the motion to pass and adopt Resolution two-three-nine-four-oh and ordinance one-two-one-seven-two, we, with the additional amendment. We have a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion on this item? Uh, Council, uh, Member Lee, I mean, Councilmember. I mean, councilmember Ulick.
Just a couple of quick questions. I remember, and Corin, forgive me, I'm not remembering right now, but I know aesthetics has been raised, and I know that it is a real value in the community. Can you just reiterate thoughts from the team on how that is covered under the general plan and other efforts?
Yes, absolutely. That is a goal that we heard and a major concern. So we, staff, did add an additional policy to the land use section following the planning commission hearing. That is land use policy sixteen, which is to protect and enhance the aesthetic attractiveness of Tucson streetscapes along the arterials, collectors, and within our neighborhoods. That policy is also cross-referenced in our transportation chapter as it references the aesthetics of our streetscapes as well. So many of our policies cross different goals and sections of the plan. So that's referenced in the land use section as well as the transportation section.
Thank you, Corin. Thank you. All right. Nothing further from me.
Any others? Alrighty. Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Vice Mayor Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Dahl?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Bettis?
Aye.
Mick Sulek?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye. Resolution two three nine four oh and ordinance one two one seven two passed by a vote of seven zero. Congratulations to the team. Now we just got to get it approved. So nobody told you, but you're going to have to run the campaign for that.
No, thank you so much. Really appreciate all your work. This is years of work, and we really value and appreciate everyone, including the residents of Tucson that participated in this. So congratulations, team. Item fourteen, adjournment. Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at or after five thirty P.M. Thank you. Have a wonderful rest of your week.